We will move to item number nineteen, Mercado Courtyards Minor General Plan Amendment and Resoning Cases Six G P two thousand twenty-two and twelve Z N two thousand twenty-two. The presenter is Jeff Barnes, Senior Planner, Planner. Continue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. I am Jeff Barnes with the city's planning department, giving you a combined presentation for the general plan and zoning cases that make up the Mercado Courtyards request. The site location shown here is highlighted in yellow. The site is located to the south of Shea Boulevard along the east side of Ninety-second Street. A little bit closer view, you can see there are existing commercial buildings and office buildings on the site. The application's development plan seeks to retain the existing commercial buildings at the north end of the site, removing the other buildings and rebuilding with residential units that I'll provide a site plan for in a couple of slides. Also of note, as I go through this, there was a previous rezoning application approved on a portion of this site, changing from the prior C three to P U D. That application's development plan sought to keep the commercial office building up near Ninety-second Street and repurpose the more linear building into residential dwelling units. The current application proposes a larger development area that captures that within it. And that is maybe more clearly shown on the existing zoning map, so that existing P U D portion of the site is shown here. This current application includes a portion of C three-zoned property at the north end and C O-zoned property along the east side, with the ultimate intent of this request to bring the entirety of that site to P U D with the existing P C D overlay that is out there today. Also included in the request is a change to the general plan's land use designations within the site boundary. I mentioned that previous zoning request, that also included a change from commercial to mixed-use neighborhoods for the portion of the site that is shown. This request tonight, with the larger development area, seeks to also change the other commercial designated areas within the boundary to be mixed-use neighborhoods through the entirety of that site boundary in alignment with the mixed-use zoning district request. So there are three actions you're being requested tonight. The first one is the adoption of Resolution one two six three-three pertaining to the minor general plan amendment. The second is adoption of Ordinance four five seven three pertaining to the zoning change. And then the third is adoption of Resolution one two six three-seven that declares the development plan that's associated to the zoning change. So I mentioned there's a P C D overlay that exists out there today. There are findings associated to that, and we've detailed through them in the staff report, but this application doesn't seek to really change that P C D component, and so I won't spend too much time combing through these. They're not seeking any sort of amendments with the current proposal that would be a function of the P C D, so it stays in place as an overlay as it is today. But the P U D district being requested does have its own findings, and so those are listed out here, again, also detailed through in the staff report, but they generally talk about the development promoting revitalization, that it proposes a plan that utilizes densities, development standards, land uses that aren't otherwise able to be accomplished in the existing zoning designation, that the development be compatible with adjacent land uses in the surrounding area, and that there's adequate infrastructure and city services to support Some of the project data, I won't comb through all of these, but some highlighted elements to this. So this is an eight-point-five-two-acre site that is being requested for this. Within that, the development plan seeks to retain over twenty-four thousand square feet of existing commercial area and then introduce now two hundred and sixty-two residential units to that area, which results thirty-point-seven-five dwelling units per acre for the cumulative development area within the site boundary. Also of note on here, the P U D specifies a minimum ten percent of open space required. The applicant's development plan proposes to be able to provide for twenty-nine-and-a-half percent, and I'll graphically show that in a few slides as well. So getting into the site layout, this is the site plan included with the development application. Identified on the north end of this is keeping that existing commercial component to the site and then introducing residential building to the south and east that wraps around a parking garage, provides surface parking, and cross-access through this development to account for access to adjacent development to the west and the existing commercial development to the north. The proposal includes signalizing the intersection at Ninety-second Street, and so that cross-access component assists in bringing vehicular access from other locations to the signalized intersection to have alternate methods of movement from and to this site. This is a zoning application, so the building elevations provided are conceptual in nature, and if approved, this would go through the Development Review Board process for more refined details, but what's conveyed in the elevation drawings that are provided in the development application is a two-story building massing at the Ninety-second Street frontage that steps back and up to three stories, which carries back through about half of the building depth before stepping up to a fourth story in height. Visible in some of the renderings that are included in the development application, probably most helpful, the lower-left corner gives sort of that Ninety-second Street perspective with that two-story-to-three-story step-back and the amount of distance before that fourth story is stepped up at the rear or the furthest-away portion of the site. As the applicant team has been working through this, they've been attempting to refine those concept elevations and demonstrate with some of these updated graphics how they're able to incorporate some materials and architectural features that are found in the adjacent buildings that exist around this site. And so that's being represented in the roof and materials in the blow-up elevation here, as well as in some updated renderings. In this case, the upper-left corner would be that Ninety-second Street frontage elevation. So I mentioned the increase in open space earlier in the calculations. This is visually representing that. The green areas highlighted on here are areas of the site qualifying as open space per the code definition of that and the twenty-nine-point-five percent of the site that can be achieved through the layout with this development plan. Also important is access and circulation, so the proposed configuration does account for the ability to have emergency vehicle access looping around the entirety of the site, as well as that cross-access component that I identified earlier. In addition to vehicular access, the development plan accounts for pedestrian circulation and cross-access, so again, in and around within the site, but also connecting from the residential across to the commercial and then on into the adjacent commercial, also the adjacent office complexes, and across that signalized intersection, Ninety-second over to the hospital campus and the Green Belt multi-use path that is over on that side of Ninety-second Street as well. And then conceptually, landscape plan demonstrating base planting to be able to be provided and those various courtyard spaces throughout the site configuration. So this did go to the Development Review Board in November, November third specifically. As a function of the zoning request, the Development Review Board is asked to make a recommendation relative to the development plan for the application. They did that and recommended approval with a vote of six-zero. As part of their discussion, they stressed that vehicular and pedestrian cross-access that is demonstrated in the development plan and wanted to make sure that that carries forward if this project moves forward. This also went to the Planning Commission November ninth. They too made a recommendation of approval with a vote of four-three, and at that Planning Commission level, the applicant had introduced a reduction from two hundred and seventy-three units to two hundred and sixty-two that's shown in the application today, and part of that modification was the incorporation of some ground-level live-work-type co-work space in that product, and those were incorporated in with the Planning Commission's stipulated recommendation. That wraps up staff's presentation, and the applicant team is here and ready to present more information for you.
Thank you. The next process is for the applicant presentation, then we'll open up for public comment. I understand there are forty people wishing to speak. Please come forward, announce your name, address, and continue.
Just waiting for a presentation to come up here. Mayor Ortega, Vice Mayor Durham, Council, and congratulations, Council, Councilwoman Millhaven. I'm excited to be here tonight. I know that we have a tremendous crowd. I know there's a lot of interest in this project, and one of the reasons why I'm excited to be here is I think this is our first real opportunity to present the project fully reimagined to you, and I hope to win you over to this project, and I hope to set a new standard for development in Scottsdale. Before I get started, I wanted you to know who I am and who Caliber is. I'm actually the CEO and co-founder of Caliber. Caliber is a Scottsdale-based developer. We were founded in Caliber, started by three young co-founders with no money, no startup capital, and just a vision, and today we are a public reporting company. We employ over seventy people in our corporate office, over a thousand in all the assets that we are invested in. And one thing that's very critical to understand about our business that's different from every other developer you might have seen out there is that Caliber is built with approximately two thousand families that have invested with us in projects and funds that we manage. These families are very much like probably some of the people in this room. Roughly fifty percent of them are Arizona residents, and so when you talk about who's funding this project, who's invested in this project, that is quite a few people that you might know, quite a few neighbors, and it's very different from some of the other projects you might have seen where the developer comes in, gets an entitlement, and then moves on. We plan to build this project. We plan to own it for the long term, and we look forward to hopefully winning your approval. Thank you very much to D R B and Planning Commission for the recommendations and the support. I want to start with the why. Nurses are walking out of the building several times a week crying, or crying while they're in the building, trying to take care of more patients than they're able to. We don't want to offer poor care, and we do our best not to. But when you have the ratios that nurses are facing, that's patient-to-nurse ratios, there is no way to deliver the best health care that you want. This is an E R level trauma nurse quoted, public quote, but this could be any nurse all over the country. This issue is a nationwide issue, and Scottsdale is definitely facing the same challenges. Honor Health Thompson Peak has apartments nearby, Banner Gateway, Manor Acateo. We have the support of Honor Health. This project will create an appealing live-work-and-play environment that is a welcome amenity for our staff and our community. We have support from the Arizona Nurses Association. The lack of attainable housing is one of many reasons hospitals are having a hard time keeping and retaining nurses. Honor Health is no exception. We have support from the Arizona Medical Office Brokers. There is thirty-two percent overall vacancy within a mile of this campus in medical office, and multifamily is the primary use missing to support the commercial and medical businesses to be able to attract and retain staff. In the area you see here, there have been no new apartments built in the last ten years. You can see my headquarters is there. I live in this area. I live in McCormick Ranch, actually. I shop at the Sprouts. I go to the Chompies. I understand this area very well. I understand the challenges of the area. There's something I want you to understand is that Caliber has never invested in a two-hundred-plus-unit apartment complex in the city of Scottsdale in our fifteen-year history. This is the first one we've brought to the table because we believe in this site. We understand the anger out there around apartments. We understand what the community is facing, and in this particular case, we hope that you can see that we can set a new standard. Thirty-nine percent of Scottsdale residents are over fifty-five, eleven percent are over seventy-four, and housing for caregivers is an incredibly important thing that we need to bring to the table. But it's not just the caregivers. We're offering incentives for retirees. We're offering the ability for me to raise my family and my two daughters here and hopefully have them graduate from ASU and want to live in the same McCormick Ranch neighborhood that I live in and have a place to start out. Only seventeen percent of people who work in Scottsdale live in Scottsdale. If you are for lower traffic and less congestion, you have to be for this project because eighty-three percent of people that work in Scottsdale drive in every single day, and allowing people to live in a place where they don't have to drive far to work or drive to work at all is a huge public benefit. The entire area you see on the map here is called, is under the general plan, the new general plan, as urban character, the same character as the recently-approved Optima complex and others, and you can see our site is directly in the center. What you don't see in that area in that entire map is very much residential or any residential at all. So adding the residential component, the co-working space, the live-work component, brings this mixed-use concept to life in this urban character designation. The other thing I want to make sure you understand is that this site has been mostly vacant for over ten years. The back lot, of course, is a dirt lot. The building itself, we acquired out of a bankruptcy sale. The buildings in front, we acquired shortly thereafter because they were fifty percent occupied with zero hope of being able to add additional occupancy. We're not taking down something that's vibrant and that's been working for the city of Scottsdale for years. We're improving an area that has been vacant and needs it. You can see that we're building an integrated live-work-play use. There's medical office uses currently. There's retail uses currently, and we just want to add to that. We showed the pedestrian access, but I want to hit on two key points before I move on. One is, once this is in place, the signalized light that we are going to pay for to build allows connectivity between the Honor Health campus, the Green Belt, and the two retail centers that will pull traffic down from Shea. Right now, if you want to go to ninety-four-hundred Shea, you have to get on Shea. If you want to go to the Sprouts Center, you have to get on Shea. Everything goes to Shea. By creating interconnectivity between these two sites, we can pull the traffic off of Shea. In addition, we're pulling all the truck traffic that currently goes to the Sprouts Retail Center from Shea and has to go back to Shea. We're pulling that off of Shea. We're also creating an opportunity so that if you're like me and you're stuck trying to turn left to go home out of the Sprouts Center, and you're sitting at that light for five minutes, eventually you decide to bail out and turn right to get on Shea because you're stuck. This signalized intersection slows the traffic and creates this public benefit where we can actually exit south of Shea. I think it's an incredible public benefit, and it has nothing to do with the alternative use of medical office that we're currently allowed to do, which is going to create significantly more traffic. You can see the twelve live-work units we've created on this site plan and those abut next to the retail and the medical office on the other side of the street, so you have a little look there. In addition, we were able to win the support of the McCormick Ranch Property Owners Association by stepping back the height, lowering the density, and creating a beautiful project that we hope that you'll find to be beautiful, too. That step-back creates a situation whether you're driving or you're walking on Ninety-second Street, you're not going to see a four-story apartment complex. You're going to see a beautiful three-story complex that perfectly fits in with the heights in the area. Gives you a little view on the step-back and what you would see from Ninety-second Street. One thing that we wanted to do, being that we live here and that being that we're headquartered here, is we wanted to build a beautiful project. I think that there's an opportunity to set a new standard for development. I think this development is balanced, and beauty is important to us, so we hired a phenomenal architect to elevate the design and change this project to be something that is worthy of the city of Scottsdale. This gives you a little look on the side from the retail looking towards the buildings, and again, from the entrance. Community feedback and council feedback has been incredibly important for us to take this prior project, redevelop it, reimagine it, and bring something to you that I think can win your vote. When we got, when we looked at the feedback, it falls into two primary categories. Feedback coming from residents that are concerned about a key issue. Those key issues were density, water, traffic, and height. The other piece of feedback we heard was from residents that were just unhappy with the amount of development going on in the city of Scottsdale. On the density side, you can see we dropped to thirty units per acre, which is roughly half of the recently-approved projects and the lowest-approved projects hopefully that you'll see in a long time, and hopefully we set a new standard with that type of density. On the water side, we are water-neutral. We're bringing our water to the table, and I'll give you a detail on that. On the traffic side, I've already kind of made my point there, and on the height side, you can see what we did to height. Rejecting all development, we're looking to you for your leadership. That is up to you. You have to decide what is the right balance of development, what is the right use for this site, and ultimately, we submit yourself to your leadership. We are now a water-neutral project. As of today, we have an agreement with S R P to acquire water and bring all of the water to the project that is necessary according to their calculations, and we are stipulating to this tonight to make sure that you know that we have covered that water requirement. So I'll end with this. Caliber has done everything we possibly can do to make this a project worthy of the city. We are at the end of the line. We have found the best balance we can bring to the table to lower the density, to lower the height, to create a beautiful project, to create public benefits, to bring our water to the table, and still produce a project that is financially viable. Most importantly, I will end with the beginning. The discounts that we're offering for essential workers, the ten-year commitment to capped increases in their rents, the ability for them to jump the line and go ninety days ahead of any other leasing person, and the ability for them, as an essential worker, as a teacher, as a nurse, anybody working within a mile, and if they have kids, the discount that we're offering or the actual payment that we're offering in full to cover the cost of their kid's tuition to Boys and Girls Club creates a project that fully, that fulfills the purpose of why we got into this in the first place. We certainly didn't want to get involved in the overdevelopment of overly-large apartments in Scottsdale. We think this project is different, and we hope to win your support.
Thank you. At this point, we will move to public comment. We do reserve the right, of course, to answer questions. You have the right to answer questions afterwards. So let me say that there's forty-five people wishing to speak. I'd ask that you allow two minutes or less. You will see a timer, and please adhere to that. We have, I'll name three people, and as you can line up or come forward, Oliver Smith, Amy Warren, and Anthony Levy. So if you could please step forward, Oliver Smith, Amy Warren, one at a time to the microphone and state your address, and allowing two minutes.
How did I get to go first? Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. Congratulations, Linda, for your service to Scottsdale. You and I have been friends for a long time, and you've done a great job. My name's Oliver Smith. I live at Choya Ninety-eighth Street, north of Shea. For about forty years, I've been in that area. In nineteen-eighty-five, I opened up a jewelry store at Ninety-Street and Via Linda. It was right between, smack between Scottsdale Ranch and McCormick Ranch, and I loved it. Everything was planned out. They had a automobile center. They had a Smitty's grocery store. They had an Aho Owls across the street. They had a cemetery somewhere in there, but they also had parks and things, and I thought it was really well-planned out. I don't know who did it, and I don't know when it was all done, but when I got there, most of the residential was in place and most of the commercial was being built, and it was a fantastic place to raise my family and to raise my business from that standpoint. The problem I have with this development is that I find it really troubling that the four points that the developer makes regards cleaning up an under-unified commercial property overrun by transients. I don't think it's our responsibility to reward bad ownership. This bad ownership has been going on for twelve years. I'm responsible for making my business successful, for being responsible for the coding and things that I have to do for signage and things like that. I think this developer should, or this owner should be responsible for that. Revitalize the retail, the ad resonance within walking proximity. We can walk there. We do walk there, and we ride our bikes all the time. Decrease the impact to traffic. That's fine. I agree with that. That's great. And provide a necessary workforce. Well, those people can live in the area, and they do enjoy living in the area. There's an apartment complex at Ninety-sixth and Mountain View that does very well. So thank you very much. I know I'm out of time, but I appreciate you voting no on this project. Thank you.
Next, please no clapping. We'll move faster. Amy Warren, Anthony Levy, and Emily Austin. So if you wish, please start a line over there, maybe faster. Amy Warren, Anthony Levy, Emily Austin. First with Amy Warren. Okay, going once. Next, we will go to Anthony Levy. After Anthony will be Emily Austin.
My name is Anthony Levy. I live at eighty-seven-fifty East Monterey Way, A five-two-five-one. Good evening, Mayor Ortega and Vice Mayor Durham and City Council members. Linda, thank you very much for your twelve years of service. It has been almost a year since I was last here, but once again, we are all here for the same thing, debating rezoning in an area that the citizens do not want rezoning. We've heard this all before from developers. Voluble housing, which is really four hundred thousand square, forty, four hundred fifty square feet apartment for twelve hundred dollars a month, traffic will be less even though they're adding thousands of cars each day to an area, a complex that will use less resources than a family home, and we all know that's not accurate. Finally, citizens against this so-called progress are called nimble, not in my backyard. But this is our backyard. No matter where you live in our city, this is our backyard. It is not an out-of-state investor's or developer's backyard, and we have the right to have a say what goes on in our backyard. With our economy in a recession, interest rates on the rise, projects already approved by our council may not even get the financing to complete their jobs. So why the rush to approve this project? Why can't we wait till next year? It's only a few weeks away when we have a new council. We do not want this project. So if you say yes, vote yes for this project, that's fine, but we will not forget, and twenty-twenty-four is not that far away. this project. That's fine. But we will not forget. And 2024 is not that far away. Thank you, Mayor.
Please, again, it'll go faster. Emily Austin and Thomas Kubey. Emily Austin, and then Thomas Kubey.
Two more minutes. Mr. Merkowitz gave me two more minutes.
Just step up, please. State your name and can...
I just don't want you to cut me off after two minutes, because I have four minutes. Mr. Merkowitz just gave me his two minutes. So I only give three. That's what I thought we got.
Thank you for letting me know. Now, I can, I will allow three minutes because someone gave their time to you. I did not know that. So now, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And Lynda, congratulations for your service. I appreciate it. My name is Emily Austin. My address is on file. I was born and raised in Kansas, moved to New York City in my 20s. The noise, honking, traffic, garbage, construction, density, and hustle and bustle was just too much. I moved to Arizona 37 years ago, which I thought was paradise. It used to be called the West's most western town. It was laid back, great weather for tennis, hiking, golf, and riding my horse almost every day of the year. I used to tie up my steed at the 92nd Street Cafe and have a mimosa. No way can you do that now. Now I live in Scottsanglis. More traffic, sirens, 13,000 approved apartments, construction, road closures, crime, rude, aggressive drivers playing chicken at drive-throughs in their fancy SUVs, Airbnbs, and short-term rentals. We don't know our neighbors anymore, and it's obvious they don't respect and appreciate Scottsdale because they aren't residents. Our voices have been ignored by council members who thumbed their noses at us when they were elected. We have screamed from the rooftops of six offensively heinous Olympic-sized swimming pools that you just approved, that will use at least 5 million gallons of water every year from evaporation, along with 1,330 apartments and six 150-foot buildings. Then you have the audacity to tell us we should conserve water? I am not putting in grass for my dogs out of spite. It costs $13,000 to put in turf, which I can't afford, and $5,000 to put in sod. Is the city going to pay for it? So if you don't want us using water on a patch of grass, fill in your pools that you probably use twice a year, and get back to me. We believed you were going to reflect our voices when we elected you. There is only one who has. Thank you, Kathy Littlefield. And my condolences for patches. I'm so sorry. I don't understand why these projects continue to be passed. I have my suspicions, but nevertheless, we're in a serious drought. I'm grateful I was an integral part of stopping the Disneyland in the desert, also known as the Desert Discovery Center, and our beloved desert preserve, and Southbridge, too, in Old Town, which would have been a disaster for merchants and one big traffic jam for years to come. I don't want to live here any longer. But as long as I'm here, I will do everything I can to vote in more people like Kathy and Barry Graham. Stop the insanity. Vote no on the Mercado. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Thomas Kubey and Jeff Cull. If someone has yielded their time, I want to cross them off the list here so I can keep track. That's how I'll try to manage this meeting. So proceed, Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Tom Kubey, a 26-year resident of Scottsdale, living at 12740 East Sunnyside Drive. I speak tonight in opposition to the Mercado Courtyards project, formerly known as the 92 Ironwood Project. The Shea corridor from the 101 freeway to 90th Street to 92nd Street to 96th Street is already heavily traveled and is a main access point to both Honor Health Hospital and the related medical offices, particularly at 92nd Street. The plan to rezone the property and add 272 apartments will only add to this congestion with likely 300 or more vehicles entering and exiting the property for this project. The proposal calls for a controlled intersection to allow for access to the property as the only, as one of the only exits and entrances to the property. Let's look at the intersection at 92nd Street and Shea, the proposed intersection at the Mercado Courtyards, the intersection at Mountain View and 92nd Street, and the intersection at 90th Street and Mountain View, and the intersection at 90th Street and Via Linda. The space between Shea and the proposed intersection is 1/10 of a mile. The distance to the right, if you turn out of the property, is approximately 4/10 of a mile to 90th Street and Mountain View. With four controlled intersections that span that space, the traffic will increase significantly. Traffic flow from the apartments will move north on 92nd Street to Shea, or turn south towards 90th Street, and ultimately to Via Linda and 90th Street at that intersection, already congested in both directions. Then moving on to the increasing commercial development south of Via Linda to the 101 freeway. Now let's not forget about the 102 new apartments at 90th Street and San Victor now under construction and being built. This alone will contribute 100 to 150 additional vehicles in that corridor heading south towards Via Linda and 90th Street, or north to the 90th Street and Shea intersection. The latter constantly backs up at Shea to the 101 freeway. Has anyone considered the aggregate impact of these projects and how that'll impact the area? The answer is yes. The 40-some-odd people here tonight are the residents in the area that do not want these projects.
Thank you, sir.
I'm done?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and we'll hear from them as well. Jeff Cull and Kathy Howard, followed by Sherry Lopez. So Jeff Cull, Kathy Howard, Sherry Lopez. Welcome.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is Jeff Cull. I live at 161 North 77th Street in McCormick Ranch. I moved there in 1995. And I've had the amazing opportunity to live in Scottsdale, experience all the benefits of Scottsdale, raising a family, participating in all the activities and parks and entertainment and so on and so forth. I have been lulled into a sense of complacency by how good the life was here and realizing that up until recently, the idea of getting involved in city council activities or citywide activities just never even crossed my mind because I thought things are going well. Don't need to change anything. Don't need to have any skin in the game or get involved. And then a few years ago, or actually much less time than that, I just started seeing the city change. I saw these massive complexes going up. I couldn't believe what was happening. Now I'm starting to see crime, seeing people stealing shopping carts, pushing everything they own in a shopping cart, panhandling. And I said to my wife, I said, "What's happened to our city?" I mean, I'm beginning to not even recognize it any longer. And I find it very concerning. So I'm here to, to express my resistance to this project. I believe there's alternatives to these types of projects. I think that we could have a better community engagement with the city and members of the community to work together, find ways to restructure these projects instead of having everybody come here on one night and have to decide whether this makes any sense or not. I think we should have alternatives presented to us. I'd like to propose that we form a committee of people who are perhaps retired, who could get involved in offering alternatives to the city. I believe we can create partnerships with like the Progress and the Independent where we can advertise what's going on in the city and have people become more engaged, more informed, instead of just a few of them, you know, passing the word around. And finally, like I said, I also believe that, you know, 2024 is essential. If the City Council continues to defy the, defy the citizens, then there's only one other way in a constitutional republic to deal with that. And we have to find alternatives to current members. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Kathy Howard and Sherry Lopez. So...
Good evening, Mayor Ortega and members of the City Council. My name is Kathy Howard. I live at 10642 East San Salvador. We've lived there in our house for 35 years. The latest attempt to mutilate our neighborhood has been renamed Mercado Courtyards after several well-financed, professionally-run mercenary feudal attempts to gain the council's approval on this parcel of land. Relentless developers are back once more trying to urbanize our neighborhood by building dense, high-rise apartments, blocking our mountain views, causing gridlock along already stop-and-grow Shea Boulevard, and threatening our diminishing supply of water. These buildings are described as luxury apartments, which could rent for up to $2,000, $2,000 per month. Affording, affordable housing in the mix is sort of wishy-washy. This project directly threatens our quiet, peaceful neighborhoods and our quality of life. Hundreds of residents have emailed the City Council objecting to requests for upzoning, while their neighbors took to social media crying out against the development. Developers with the assistance of city staff attempted a bait-and-switch, renaming and assigning new names and zoning numbers, eliminating from the project files hundreds of previous citizen emails objecting to these developments. Putting lipstick on a pig doesn't change anything. It's still a pig. Don't be fooled by the man behind the curtain. Rehashing the same old project does not change the basic issue. It is only Groundhog Day over and over again. As our elected representatives, have you heard and do you acknowledge the concerns, votes, and requests of your constituents? If so, vote no on the zoning request for Mercado Courtyards.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Next, we have Sherry Lopez, and then Alex McLaren. I like that waving pages instead of clapping. I like that. I think that's a show of support without delaying our, our... Continue, Sherry Lopez, then Alex McLaren, Ryan Dick III.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I just want to share a personal story. A few months ago, I experienced a medical emergency that required me to be taken to the Shea Hospital via ambulance at the height of rush hour, experiencing the inability to breathe properly due to a severe allergic reaction with only oxygen to support me while in transit to the hospital. Needless to say, was a very frightening experience, which was enhanced by the fact that it was taking so long to get to the hospital. From time, from the time the ambulance tried to get off of the 101 onto Shea and to the hospital bay, it was 20 minutes. And it was 30 minutes before I received adequate medical care that actually saved my life. This is unacceptable, and this occurred well before snowbirds and the increased traffic arrived. I ask that you please consider voting no on the approval of the proposed apartment because traffic is already a big problem that can and does impact human life, especially when an ambulance cannot get through traffic at some of these intersections because it's a parking lot. There's nowhere for the ambulances to go or the cars to move out of the way. Now, this situation could happen to anyone and at any time, and slowing the ability for a person to receive much-needed medical care because of heavy traffic is not acceptable. And with many proposed apartments, it's only going to get worse because the cars still have to go to Shea to get to the 101. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex McLaren, and Ryan Dick, and James Haxby. So we have Alex McLaren, and then Ryan Dick.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Councilman Mill Haven, again, thanks for your service. Probably going to annoy a lot of people here, but I'm a strong supporter of this project. It's compatible with the Shea area plan. It's compatible with the general plan 2035, which the voters approved. It provides needed housing for the hospital and the hospital workers. It also, I think, has some of the workforce housing that has been approved by the council in other projects. The traffic is an issue in the area, and I know Paul Basher has been working on that. And I think the signal at 92nd will, which enters the project will, will help with that. I like the way that the, the buildings had been set back from the street. Kind of reminds me of the Green Belt 88 project, which is close to where I live. And I think that was a change from the original project. And it certainly removes the blighted, the blighted building in the, in the area. Water, I know, is an issue for a lot of people, and it's an issue for, for the city and for the state. I would recommend that if people are interested in, in the water situation, they might read Joanna, Joanna All Hands, The Arizona Republic. She had a really excellent article yesterday about the water situation. I think we can have growth and water at the same time. The city has 100-year water-assured supply, and we are working with the state and with others on assuring our water supply. So I'm a supporter of this project. I think it would, it would help the area tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ryan Dick, James Haxby. Excuse me, Ryan Dick, James Haxby, and Virginia Anne Bertocino.
Mayor Ortega, council members. My name is Ryan Dick, and I moved into the neighborhood between Cactus and Shea along 96th Street in the 90s. My address is 1175 North 95th Street. My girls and I would typically ride down to the Mustang Library through this area, and we've done so for years. We shop at Sprouts, previously at Bosch's. And I'm here specifically in response to Vice Mayor Durham's comment a couple of weeks ago that there weren't any residents who were here to voice their opinions about a recent development. As a resident, I used to take my neighbor, John Preston, to this particular facility where he had some medical appointments, and I would sit and wait for him. And I noticed that over the years, the facility became more rundown. Paint was chipped, the floors were dirty, there was oftentimes a pervading chif. And eventually, his medical provider moved away. And that's the sort of environment that we see today, and has continued even under the new ownership. In May, I took this picture of a downed tree in this facility. And in July, when we had a community meeting, I drew the attention of the people who were representing the owners to this issue, the trash, the unpainted pavements, the curbing that was destroyed, and the tree. And no one was interested. I did again at the St. Patrick's Church meeting. Again, none of the representatives of the owners were interested in the fact that there's a lot of trash, that there's a lot of lack of maintenance and hygiene. And this has continued. And I want to also draw your attention to the fact that this is not the only building of this nature. During COVID, I took my daughter to this building at Osborne to have a physical. Same sort of functionally similar building, condo facility, but it, the paint is not chipped. There's good maintenance, full of doctors. And that sort of lack of maintenance tells me that these have not been, are not, and continue to not be good neighbors. Because here is yet another downed tree. This picture was taken this week. They have not been good neighbors to us. I do not support...
Thank you, Mr. Dick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. James Haxby, and then we have Virginia Anne Berton Chino, excuse me. James Haxby?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Congratulations, Lynda. You'll enjoy retirement. I spent my last summer going to Honor Health Rehab three days a week at 92nd and Mountain View. I live at Scottsdale and Cactus. I'm an expert on Shea Boulevard traffic. I was in the 2 o'clock group. 1:30, I saw not only your ambulance stuck in traffic, I saw numerous ambulances stuck in traffic trying to get to the hospital. ambulances stuck in traffic trying to get to the hospital. Rehab's two hours. I was leaving at four o'clock. If I would go up to 92nd and try and turn west on Shea, you might have to wait two, three cycles, because it was bumper-to-bumper traffic going to Shea. If I decided to duck around on Mountain View to go over to Hayden, you'd look at the 101, and it was a parking lot trying to get off on Shea. The traffic is terrible here. Now, this owner says this project will generate less traffic than the office building. The office building's vacant. I was there in the summer. We didn't have any winter visitors. This is the bare traffic going on now. That we're going to add more traffic to it? Let's get real. The other thing he says is that the building's old and obsolete. Well, as the previous speaker said, I go to my doctor down at Osborne and Scottsdale Road, and I go into the duplicate to this building, and it's maintained. So, why are we, as a city, rewarding an owner that does not mean and intentionally blights his property? Why are we rewarding him with an upgrade on that? Is he going to do any better on the new property? The other thing, unfortunately, I spent way too much time last year at Honor Health, various departments. I've yet to find a staff member, a nurse, technician over there, that asks, "Would this discount on rent be a benefit to you?" And I've yet to get a yes.
Thank you, Mr. Haxby.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ginny Berton Chino, and then Stanley Horowitz. Ginny?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you very much. And a couple of my rabble-rousers have ceded their time to me. I promise I won't take it all. My name is Virginia Berton Chino. I go by Ginny. I've been a resident in Arizona since 1973 in the Valley, and a resident of Scottsdale since 1986. I've been involved in the community for a number of years and have served on several boards, including Faith House, which is a residential treatment program for victims of domestic violence, health underwriters, three HOAs, and most recently, Sipus with the Scottsdale PD. Yet, emails from this developer supporter call me a radical. "Don't let radicals prevent you from voting for a project in the best interest of the city. I'm just a resident who wants to protect my quality of life." Is the project in the best interest of the city? Most certainly of the developer. The same developer who, earlier this year, prior to renaming their project twice, claimed, quote, "Scottsdale's otherness undermines valley livability." That's an insult to every resident in Scottsdale. Here are the facts. The Shea corridor is already a traffic nightmare, as previously discussed. A high-density apartment complex will add to that congestion day and night. People need easy access to the hospital, especially ambulances. Clogging 92nd Street south of Shea, where the ambulance enters the hospital grounds, is a recipe for disaster. The land in question has sat vacant for several years and allowed to deteriorate. Why would any homeowner experience that same leniency? The answer is resounding no. We're seeing a surge in crime in Scottsdale. Who of you wishes that to escalate? Water is one of the biggest issues facing us. How can the city of Scottsdale suggest to homeowners and HOAs not to oversee their lawns? Its communiqué states, "This simple act can save thousands of gallons of water each month." Sadly, it doesn't mention how the city council can save millions of gallons of water simply by voting no on these high-density apartment projects. Where has common sense gone? It seems to have died. I'm holding copies of the emails I've sent to the city council this year alone. There are many. And I've heard back from Solange Whitehead, who responded, quote, "Protecting Scottsdale's character and conserving water are both top priorities and also save tax dollars. Today's council is very aligned with residents," unquote. Well, look around the room right now, and look at the number of people who don't agree with you, councilwoman. We are not aligned, and we are certainly not on the same page. I also heard back from Betty Janik, who responded, quote, "I voted no on 92nd and Ironwood and others. What you see now is construction from the Lain City Council approvals. Water is a very major concern and in limited supply," unquote. Well, today's vote is not on Lain, it's on you. Tom Durham responded, quote, "As for the water issue, multifamily housing uses water more efficiently than single-family housing due to the absence of swimming pools and less need for outdoor irrigation," unquote. Mr. Durham, if you were to vote in favor of a medical complex instead of high-density apartments, you would see greatly reduced water usage.
Thank you, Jenny. You're right at the point.
May I finish? It's time for the city council to start walking the talk. We tax-paying residents of Scottsdale elected you to protect us and not the special interests of the developers. It's time for you to save Scottsdale. For crying out loud, do the right thing.
Next, we have Stanley Horowitz, Fred Crowden. Stanley Horowitz and Fred Crowden standing by.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stanley Horowitz. I'm a retired cardiologist. I've lived in McCormick Ranch for 33 years. Never have I felt the obligation to show up at a council meeting or even email the council, but at this time, the issue is of utmost importance to me and my family. I don't want to rehash the traffic issues on Shea Boulevard, or how many traffic lights it takes you to make a left and go west, but what happens if you exit this complex and go south? Then there's a continuous transition from 92nd onto Mountain View Road. No traffic light, no stop sign, nothing. The only thing that slows traffic down between the Mountain View Rec Center, the Mountain View Park, the Cochise Elementary School, is a traffic light at 90th Street. It's only a matter of time before people avoid Shea by going down 92nd to Mountain View and onward to Scottsdale Road. The next point I'd like to make is about the height. This project, whatever's built there, should not exceed the height of any other structure on 92nd Street between Shea and Mountain View Road. Just because they reduce the height in the first tier of apartments on 92nd Street, doesn't mean that the rest of the mountain will not be built up. Likewise, for density, why can't they put single-family homes, patio homes with desert landscaping, town homes that are only a story or two? And lastly, I find it offensive that they chose to remove the 94th Street adjacent project from this council meeting today. It is purely an attempt to give the impression that we're not talking about 500 units, we're talking about 273 reduced to 262. It's definitely a ploy to alter perception rather than the issue at hand.
Thank you, Doctor. Next, we have Fred Crowden and Barbara Poggi. Please consider the time. Fred Crowden?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members and fellow Scottsdale citizens. My name is Fred Crowden. I've been a resident of Scottsdale since 1996. My daughters graduated from Desert Mountain High School. After graduation, both daughters left Scottsdale and moved to other cities in the Valley where housing is more affordable. In 2013, my wife and I sold our family home in Scottsdale Ranch and moved to Scottsdale Mission. That's a condominium community north of Shea on 92nd Street. We have 38 buildings, 248 units, and multi-stories. It's one of four condominium communities in that area that have multi-story buildings. I support the vision shared by the developer caliber to target members of the health community. I've listened at a previous meeting to a nurse explain how this project will improve her life. I believe adding a traffic stoplight at Cochise and 92nd is critical and has merit beyond this project. I see healthcare workers crossing there every day. I commend the city for addressing water issues at the city level and not at the project level. As a senior citizen, medical facilities and services are very important and become more important the older I get. But, the city needs to consider the various needs of all people, not just our seniors, and not just those that are no longer in the workforce enjoying their life. It's a project, an opportunity to address the needs of those young, working, adult citizens, and build a better future for upcoming generations in Scottsdale. I will conclude by saying adding a residential facility such as Mercado Courtyards will foster economic growth. It will revitalize an area both day and night that currently has several empty stores and an empty building. It will have a positive impact on the services and amenities offered in the surrounding area. Our young caregivers have given a lot to our community, especially during COVID. This project will provide some balance to that equation and insert welcome energy into Scottsdale Medical Corridor. I urge the council to approve the Mercado Courtyards.
Next, we have Barbara Poggi and Scott Selly. That's Barbara Poggi and Scott Selly, then Chris Schaffner. Barbara, only once? Oh, wait. She's here. And Scott Selly should be up next, so prepare the way.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Poggi. Thank you for having us all. I am the property manager for the Scottsdale and Shea, sorry, property that we all know as the Chompious and Sprouts Shopping Center. We are in favor of this property and this development. I'm here to support this project and believe it will help all of our tenants with the increased customer population. We also have a strong need for the traffic signals where our visitors can safely exit. Multifamily is the best use for this property, as many of our residents will walk to our stops, and the area will be safer with a seven-day-a-week activity. Please support this project and the Scottsdale developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Selly. Please, I'm finding the upper gallery. Do I have to repeat myself? Look over here. You keep clapping. Please stop. I ask everyone, and you're included. Thank you. Scott Selly, Chris Schaffner. Proceed.
Mayor and council, Scott Sealy. I am an investor in Caliber. I'm invested in Caliber because they are invested in our local communities, and I am aware of the areas and the projects that they participate in, and they're in places where we need investment and we need infrastructure. I also am the vice chairman of the Maricopa Board of Health and affirm the earlier stated issues. You're all aware of them. In terms of our healthcare workforce in the county, it's not unique to us, but with the influx of visitors and residents that we have in Maricopa County, it's a bigger issue for us on an ongoing basis. I'm in meetings every day with healthcare institutions in the Valley. Yesterday, at Maricopa Integrated Health, the number-one concern they have about their ability to serve this community is the availability of staff. You're well aware of what the market is and the area that we're talking about, and the greater challenges that Honor Health has. My secondary, there have been a lot of fears expressed tonight, and I'll share a little bit of mine on a personal basis. Twenty-seven years ago, I brought a little girl home from Scottsdale Osborne Hospital. Six months later, she was back in that hospital with breathing difficulties like we heard described here earlier. I think for any parent, and I say that was 27 years ago, for any parent, your fear is you come into that emergency room with your child who is, at that point, fingers blue, lips blue, and there is not adequate staff to meet their needs. We were fortunate to have a very educated, not educated, but attentive nurse that grabbed her and got her to a doctor. Sunday night, my granddaughter fell, cut her eye open, and had to have stitches, and we had to rush her into Scottsdale Shea's emergency room. Once again, we were grateful there was a nurse there that could take care of her. We would like to contribute to this project to make sure that going forward, those nurses are able to have a place to live and can be close to the hospital that serves this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Chris Schaffner and Sunny Curtley.
Hello. I'm Chris Schaffner. I'm an investor in Scottsdale. That's where my home is. That's how I've chosen to invest in this fine city. If apartments solve workforce housing, why haven't they? We have built a veritable ton, thousands upon thousands of units in Scottsdale, and yet, we still talk about this supposed workforce housing issue that we have in Scottsdale. Look at the airpark. It's our largest employment center in the city of Scottsdale by far. We have stacked it full of apartments, and apartments within walking distance of that. And those apartments are not full of workers in the Scottsdale Airpark. They're just simply full of people that want to live in Scottsdale. So, that's why our traffic continues to go up. That's why we continue to see more congestion, because these apartments don't work and don't make this happen. If you build this next to Scottsdale Healthcare, you'll get a handful of people that work at Scottsdale Healthcare that'll live there. There's 262 units. The vast majority of the rest of them will not work there. They will work someplace else they will drive to, and probably a considerable distance. So, this will only exacerbate the problem. It will not help it. And we know this. We have a pattern we can see by looking at what we've done in Scottsdale so far for this. Other things like water use. I respect the developer trying to make big efforts here, but unless they're going to make it rain, they're not bringing their own water. It is water that would be used and would be needed to be used someplace else, even if it's agriculture or whatever. Developers can't make water. They can do a lot of things, can't make rain. So, I would urge this council, read the room in the city. Many of you, there's a majority on this council of you now who have run on the position of, "We've rezoned too many places and put things where they don't belong, namely, high-density apartments." You don't solve congestion with density. Look across America. It doesn't work anywhere we've tried it. It adds to it. Do not add to the problems that we have here. This is the most congested area of Scottsdale. Adding this apartment will make it worse. It will not accomplish the goals of workforce housing, and it will degrade the quality of life for everybody in Scottsdale, including the people that would move into there. So, I urge you this evening to not approve this project. Thank you.
Next, we have Sunny Curtley and Amanda Marsis.
Good evening, Mayor Ottega, Vice Mayor Durham, and council members. My name is Sunny Curtley. I'm here as a member of the Coalition of Greater Scottsdale Board of Directors. I'm here to reconfirm that the majority of our members are opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Marsis, and then Bob Pedgeman, and Daniel Court is third. Amanda, hello.
Hello. My name is Amanda Marsis, and I'm a registered nurse. I was born and raised in Scottsdale, and I learned of this project from outreach from the developer. I am here to express my support for the project. Nursing shifts can often last 12 to 14 hours, and the opportunity to have a new, beautiful, multifamily housing complex within walking distance to one of Scottsdale's great hospital campuses would be a huge support to nurses. Caliber is a local developer with local investors seeking to improve an area that has sat mostly vacant for a long time. I think our city needs a good balance of housing options, and it looks like the multifamily would be a good and unique use for this area. I am also grateful for the incentives offered to nurses. The first look to beat the market to lease a unit, the discount on monthly rent, and the long-term cap on rental rate increases creates a higher likelihood a nurse or medical professional can find a sustainable home in Scottsdale. I have seen hospitals resort to paying large premiums, along with free housing for travel nurses to fill staffing shortages, and I think that providing this type of housing close to Honor Health could alleviate some of that. Please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Pedgeman and Daniel Court, John Nichols.
Mayor Ottega, I have three minutes.
Who else is on your list, so I can cross them off?
Rick Gaston, don't need a time.
Can we show that? Sorry. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Ottega. Councilmember's name is Bob Pejman, addresses on the record. And I got to tell you, I don't know of any other project in recent Scottsdale history which has had this much resident opposition. The city received basically around 700 emails and comments to date on this project, including the older version, which was really the same. It doesn't matter what you do. You can knock a story off of this. You can use this water gimmick. The issue that remains is traffic. Now, consider this. Part of this rezoning, you're asked to rezone 1.9 acres of the shopping center along with it. If you rezone this tonight, the owner of the shopping center can go to DR and get another 100 apartments approved without going to council. So the entitlements given tonight are not 270, they're closer to 370. So how much lipstick you're going to put on this pig? Consider that, just add 100 units to it. Okay? Now, here's an example of an email. I'll put this here. That was sent to you. It's interesting. It says, "Are you out of your minds? Vote no on this project. We voted you in to stop this type of redevelopment." It's amazing that that statement is made in one sentence, but there are hundreds of other emails that make that statement. So right now, on this council, there are five council members, including the mayor, who ran on this promise, "Elect me so that I will listen to you, not the developers." Well, just looking at your inbox, how many hundreds of emails have you received with just complaining about this project and projects like it? How many open houses do you need to witness to see how hundreds of people are opposed to this? I think the last one was a good one to witness. And the pro-development side now will now say, "Hey, for 700 emails, we have a voter base of 170,000." Well, if you want to go that route, let's look at the last election. The last election, the three members, the three candidates who won ran on a platform of "Elect me so I can listen to you, not the developers." In fact, the non-incumbent Barry Graham beat the three pro-development candidates who had a huge, you know, funding. If that's not a referendum on what the voters are telling you, that they don't want so much of these apartments, I don't know what is. So those of you who ran on that platform, you can honor your promises or you can betray the voters.
Next, we have Daniel Court, John Nichols, Patty Badenoch.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Danny Court. I'm a partner at the firm Elliott D. Pollock &amp; Company. We employ a team of economists and financial professionals and our offices are at 5111 North Scottsdale Road here in Scottsdale. We had the opportunity to calculate the economic benefits of the proposed project. Very top-line benefits that this project would infuse $8.5 million of new resident spending into the city of Scottsdale. If you were to develop it as a medical office, you would expect about $119,000 of tax revenue from operations. This project would bring in nearly half a million dollars of tax revenue to the city of Scottsdale specifically. So it's a far better, a far more productive use of the land to have this project versus a medical office. We did note an attempt to potentially discredit our analysis. I'll just say that we rely on a 35-year track record of excellence in economic analysis and I was proud to note that Councilwoman Millhaven proudly restated one of our analyses of the Skysong Development, which we are very proud of as well. So we stand by our record and our excellence in this economic analysis and we just wanted to convey those economic benefits to you.
Thank you. John Nichols, Patty Badenoch, and one deferred to Gabrielle Hitchcock. So, proceed.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, city council. I especially want to thank Solange, Kathy, Benny Janik, and Tom Durham for supporting the citizens opposed to South Bridge 2. In supporting South Bridge 2, you clearly said you would listen to the citizens of Scottsdale and support them as opposed to the development community. You made that assurance. That's why you were elected. And if you don't do that, you're failing to honor what you said you would do. The citizen opposition to this project is enormous. I personally gathered 180 signatures on the petition to oppose South Bridge 2. The opposition to this project is far in excess of what led to the successful rejection of the South Bridge 2 proposal. There are two serious issues affecting us. I gave you emails and I know the city clerk told me that you each received those emails. I incorporate those in this comment. We have an issue of traffic on Shea, which is a disaster. The city built cutouts that made the problem much worse, because now there are tidal waves of traffic that come down to 92nd and Shea at multiple times a day blocking traffic. We have a water shortage that's enormous. The city, the developer indicated that they have a deal with SRP. They can't have a developer with SRP. We, by federal law, cannot use water from SRP outside the SRP service area. That's the law. So what the developer has said is not the fact. 76% of our water in Scottsdale comes from the cap. And guess what? We're at the stage of having that water cut off in Scottsdale. Where are we going to get the water from? You can't make water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Next, we have Patty Badenoch and then Ms. Hitchcock.
Good evening, mayor and council. Patty Badenoch, 47-year resident here in Scottsdale. All we want is a simple majority to truly reflect the majority of the citizens who live here. Instead of relying on your comfort zone and saying that this is the best we can do under the circumstances, you should be reevaluating why this overbuilt rush is so ironclad that this project and the others can't be turned down. Would like to see votes made in tune with policy changes to reflect direct outcomes that represent what is special, unique, quaint, the historic character that we value most about Scottsdale. We want you to value to keep Scottsdale as a tourist destination. This is what many of us heard from the majority of you when running for office and this is why there is so much disappointment. I would like to put on the video number one, please.
It is difficult, to say the least.
We understand that there is traffic congestion as you get closer to Scottsdale Road or closer to Shea Boulevard, but the roadway network has ample capacity and I think directional flow works well with this project.
Now, it shows the level of service in the morning rush hour as a D as in David. Now, in school, that would have been a problem. In traffic engineer speak, the standard in Scottsdale is level of service, D as in David, is the goal. That's the standard.
And it was also mentioned that traffic volume has decreased significantly both at the intersection of Scottsdale and Mountain View and at Scottsdale and Shea. So these streets are nowhere near capacity. It's just hard to understand the fear of an overwhelming amount of traffic because the numbers don't show us that.
I do want to talk about the traffic across the street there. That's legitimate, but it just, I don't believe this project impacts that.
When you compare the current approved use at the site to this use, the traffic study shows 6,183 fewer trips per day. That's an 82% reduction in traffic by using, by putting this use in place versus the use that's allowed there today.
If they don't stop approving more high-density projects, our city will start looking like Los Angeles with traffic gridlock and pollution. It is time to send a message to the city council to stop the urbanization of Scottsdale.
Thank you. Next, we're going on to Andrew Padore and Kurt Bowie. Andrew Padore, Kurt Bowie, Cameron Steiner.
Apologies for not being ready to go. It's a little bit tough to hear in the back. But my name is Andrew Padore. I live at 6815 East Camelback, Apartment 4013 here in Scottsdale. I'm the managing director of Multifamily Investments from Mark Taylor Residential, which, as many people probably know, is a manager of over 2,000 apartment units in the greater Phoenix area. I'm here to support this project. As discussed, there have been, there have not been any apartments buildings built within five-mile radius of this proposed project and this area is completely underserved. For Scottsdale to thrive, we need to be a place where essential workers can live. This developer has generously offered discount and community benefits that is far and away the best discount program I've ever seen in my 15 years working in multifamily real estate. It's a unique program and I applaud the developer for doing that. The people who live and work at Honor Health and serve the residents of this community deserve the opportunity to live near where they work. They can't do so right now, or many of them can't, because we have an affordability problem that is well-publicized. Rents are up dramatically, the second highest increase of any metro area over the last three years, and good people are being priced out. I believe wholeheartedly the only way to control the cost of housing is to build more housing. Here we have a devoted, local developer who has made substantial efforts to appease the community, a longstanding vacant building that doesn't have a better use, and a major need for housing. I think it's fair to worry that if this project does not justify a rezoning, perhaps none will. And if that's the case, the future may be bleak for the hard-working people of this community. I hope we can avoid that outcome and I wholeheartedly support this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kurt Bowie. And I may have missed Gabrielle Hitchcock. Thank you for your honesty. No. Thanks for letting us know. Continue.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Bowie. I've lived in Scottsdale since 1987. I live at 9713 E. Celtic Drive, which is just north of this location. I've lived there since 1994. I followed this development from the beginning. I'm a consultant for the nursing industry and thought having apartments close to Honor Health would be a great benefit and also a good place for seniors and possibly somewhere down the road, my wife and I would look at living at a place like this. This should not be a controversial case. The design is spectacular. The community benefits to the city of Scottsdale are numerous and there's huge housing need in this area. I see I'm getting some thumbs-down signs back there. I attended an open house at my church, St. Patrick's. Councilwoman Millhaven was there and witnessed behavior that was rude and quite frankly disappointing. I also followed this debate on Nextdoor and found the rancor to be similar to anyone who does not support this project. Developer seems to have made changes to appease those who don't want more apartments. Their argument seems to be self-serving and focused solely on being against apartments, with no thought to what may be developed if apartments on the site are not approved. I can venture to guess that it will not be a park, that it's going to be redeveloped into medical office buildings and I heard at the St. Patrick's meeting, instead of 500 parking spaces, there will be 1,200 parking spaces, which is going to create more traffic. It's easy to get everybody riled up when there's only one motive and that is to stop this project without thoughts to what alternative development will be put in this location, which is going to be a four-story medical office building. Personal attacks on various parties of this project, including the McCormick Ranch president and members of the city council, need to stop. I would ask you to consider voting yes on this project because I think it's the right thing to do for this area of Scottsdale and the project will have long-term benefits to this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cameron Steiner and Michael Hurt.
My name is Cameron Steiner. You've probably seen me up here at the last two or three hearings in support of this project and I don't need to go on too much further about why I support this project as I've done it a few times, but my question to you folks is that the opposition group hasn't showed up to a single one of those except tonight, nor have they given any decent reasons as to why they're opposed to this project. And they're disrespecting our healthcare workers by holding up thumbs-down signs when those are the people that are putting their lives at risk every day to protect them, who are the people who will be living at this project. They're holding up signs that say "Protect Scottsdale" when this building has been known for homeless people and drug paraphernalia and drug addicts. So do you want them to protect Scottsdale or is this up to you folks to make this a decent project for the future generations of Scottsdale, which is myself, a young professional, which I don't think there's a single person here on the opposition team of my age who will be the future of this city? Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Hurt and Margie Creden.
Hi, I'm Michael Hurt. First of all, thank you for your service to our community and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a physician and I work in and around multiple office buildings, facilities around this project and I can tell you there's tremendous buzz among my colleagues, allied health workers, nurses about this project and I'm in support of it and so are they. The opportunity for them to be able to commute to work by foot is, can't get much greener than that. They are excited about it. They're excited about the opportunity to have discounted housing after a 14-hour shift, be able to crawl home, not have to get in a car. So I just thank you for your support and for all you do for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Margie Creden and Gary Naquin.
Good evening. Margie Creden, 2940 North 83rd Street. We do have a video we're going to show, but real quick, I just want to say the common theme seems to be that we are, you know, that we're going to be supporting lower-income folks that can live here in these kind of places, but the good news is, is that there's already over 10,000 approved apartments that are coming, probably before these, that can hopefully alleviate some of that problem. But for right now, we have a video.
The city council will be voting on the 92nd Street rezoning. This proposal would in fact rezone part of the Sprouts Shopping Center. Our neighbors live in suburban developments, including McCormick Ranch, Scottsdale Ranch, and Cactus Acres. We chose to live here because of the quiet lifestyle, beautiful parks, green belt, and mountain views. There's no place like Scottsdale. The city is trying to rezone and redevelop our area into the next urban center, just like they did in the airpark and downtown. Thanks to a small group of local residents who did their own neighborhood outreach, the community has been notified and people are outraged and mobilized. The city council has received hundreds of emails opposing these projects and more are pouring into the city's inbox every day. Here are some of the neighbors' comments.
Hi, my name is Barbara. We moved to this area, Scottsdale Ranch, which we love. Please don't ruin it with any more apartments. We don't need them.
Hello, my name is Mike. There's already too much traffic on Shea. I've experienced that all summer long.
People think that Gen Z and millennials don't drive, but if they move into these apartments, they will drive and the traffic will get worse.
For the last 10 years, I've seen thousands of apartments being built, not only in Scottsdale but Phoenix. When is enough enough?
How dare the city council even think about trying to turn our quiet, beautiful neighborhood into the next urban center? We'll find out which council members honor their campaign promises, protect the residents, or who will join the developers? or who will join the developers' cabal.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Next, we go to Michael Montalone. After Michael, Jason Alexander. Only 10 more to go.
Mayor, Mayor, I apologize. I think you missed Gary Naquin.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. There was Gary Naquin on the previous page. Please come forward. Okay, we'll reverse. You go, you go ahead, Michael, and then Gary. Apologies.
All right. Thank you. My name is Michael Montalone. I grew up in Scottsdale. I own a business about half a mile away from here. I'm in support of the project. I think that building apartments there is going to help, especially as someone who has employees that would love to live closer to our office but can't afford to. Grew up in Scottsdale, a lot of new-built communities growing up and stuff, and one thing's for sure, if there's land in Scottsdale, it's going to get built on. It just doesn't matter. I've heard plenty of places that they said they weren't going to build on that got built on, so I'd rather see apartments there where people can live in the community rather than more stores or more office complexes or medical complexes that are just going to bring more traffic from outside of Scottsdale to what I agree Shea and the 101 has been a traffic nightmare since I worked at the Kmart on 90th Street and Shea right there. So going all the way back to when they built the 101. It's always been a problem. Think that's something that can be addressed, you know, differently, but I think building apartments that will look really nice, will update the area to, you know, a little bit to an area that hasn't really been updated since, you know, they put the Chipotle in in like 2004, will be nice and hopefully spur some, some growth and some updates and maybe get the area a little nicer without totally doing what they did in Kirland with giant buildings and stuff like that, because it is still centered around the hospital. It is still centered around people that want to live in that neighborhood. So that's my hope. I support the project, and thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Naquin. After Gary Naquin, we have Jason Alexander and Jason Phillips.
My name's Gary Naquin. Address 11520 North 99th Street, Scottsdale. How did we get here? It's interesting. Instead of restating all the well-made points this evening about growth and water allocation or reallocation and traffic, I'd like to focus on a little hindsight perspective and try to, you know, why did we choose to live in Scottsdale? You hear terms like livability, quality of life, mobility. I've had the good fortune to travel quite a bit in my lifetime, and I also served on quite a few not-for-profit boards that run and sponsor sporting events that bring folks from all over the country into our great community. I've never once heard anyone say that they come to Scottsdale because of the apartments. I, 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 it's sort of tongue-in-cheek, but I, I think of the character of our neighborhoods, the quality, the caliber of our projects. Those words matter to a lot of long-term residents. I think this vote tonight is more than just about a single project. I think it's about looking where we've been, what are our contemporary challenges that we're faced as a community? And when you vote, really think about what are you saying to the community? What are you saying to yourself? And what legacy will we leave for those who follow? Once again, I think Scottsdale's a wonderful place, green belts, spring training, mountain preserves. Don't, please don't take that for granted. Let's protect Scottsdale, and I implore you to please vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason Alexander, Jason Phillips, and Diane Gray. Jason Alexander, Jason Phillips.
Hi, can I get the overhead turned on here, please? From day one, the opposition to this project has taken a position to stop the apartments. They're basing it on an existential dislike of apartments rather than the specifics of this project. This has been a sophisticated campaign. Actually, my hat is off to Susan Wood and the Protect Scottsdale Group for the campaign they've run, but I want to break it down for you in detail. They have four separate Nextdoor groups, two Facebook pages, three YouTube channels, a meetup group, an email list, and they are backed by a professional videography studio. This is a campaign of manufactured opposition. It has followed the worst possible dog whistles, calling you, the commissioners, everybody who's served this city, the city staff rubber stamps, saying that the voters were lied to to support the general plan. Opposing apartments, by adding thousands of apartments, liberals are attempting to flip Scottsdale blue. And probably the, what I thought up until just a few weeks ago, the nastiest moment of this campaign was when the Protect Scottsdale Organization doxxed and threatened, and they didn't threaten, but they created such an atmosphere of threats and toxicity to the volunteer HOA manager of McCormick Ranch that this gentleman needed security for a volunteer position. I thought this was the worst aspects of this campaign, until just recently when a couple videos came out attacking city councilors as mean girls and Uncle Toms. And then finally, yesterday and today, the Protect Scottsdale Organization harvested email lists of supporters from public comments and the planning file and sent them intimidating emails saying, how can you support this? Did the developer put you up to it? Finally, I want to close with Councilors Janik, Councilors Durham, Councilor Whitehead, along with myself and several others, were the leaders of the Desert Discovery Center Opposition. And under our leadership, there were a lot of bad things that happened at our camp, a lot of really regrettable moments. You have the opportunity here to send a clear signal that we will not make decisions based on this sort of toxicity. Resident feedback is good. Manufactured opposition should not be listened to. Thank you.
Next, we have Jason Phillips, Diane Gray, and then Caitlin Suter. Jason Phillips, please address your place of residence, name your place of residence. Diane Gray and Caitlin Suter.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jason Phillips. I currently live at 6921 East Kathleen Road, right at 70th and Bell Road, kind of right on the Scottsdale-Phoenix borderline. I, I stand here as, I was born and raised in Scottsdale. I went to, went to school there, went to high school there. I worked at the Scottsdale Shea Hospital, as I mentioned the previous time I spoke up here a couple of weeks ago, and I, I can attest to the amount of workers that leave. There's just the lack of affordable housing that's there. And then what really drew me in is the 10-year cap on not raising, you know, rents, rents for people in my position if they were to be able to sign up and live there. And then I currently work as a firefighter and a paramedic here locally. That's also what attracts me is, as much as I love living with three or four other people at a rented house, being able to get into my own place, closer to where I live, closer to where I work, you know, is really all people like myself, the next generation coming up that want to stay in Scottsdale and stay where we're from. We're just asking for, you know, affordable housing and good options to, to be able to live at. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Gray, Caitlin Suter, and Dr. Bob Sager.
I'm Diane Gray, and I have lived here in Scottsdale since 1974. Can you hear me?
Closer, get closer.
Okay, right here.
Or pull it down.
Pull it down.
Is that? Okay. I'm Diane Gray, and I've lived in Scottsdale since 1974. I'm a designer, and I really wanted to see what that project looked like, and that's why I was lured out into the 120-degree temperature when they had the first meeting outside. And I was the one, because I'm a speaker on the subject of domestic violence, I was the one that said it was abusive. I mean, that, that day, that day was abusive to all of us, asking us to come out and see. Very poor drawings of the place, and everything I've seen, I really can't even see what it's going to look like. And now tonight, I saw one little blip, and I thought, okay, yeah, that's going to be one of those white buildings with the gray, you know, trim around the front. And when you look at that shopping center, it's beautiful because it's got brick, and it kind of winds around, and it kind of fits into the landscaping. And in Italy, we had a saying that when you were going to build a house, you first must live, you must look at the property and say, what would I like to be looking at while I'm here? And this just looks like they've designed it, and they're plopping it right there. It's very obvious they have no intention of keeping Sprouts or Chompy's. And if you'll remember, Chompy's, the other one, got torn down at Paradise Valley Mall. Everybody thought that'd be there forever. Uh-uh, no, it's down. And so this is just a little stepping stone that they're taking to get that area, and once they get it, they're going to go on and go on and go on. And I love the brick building that's on the property, and, and I think using nurses, they're almost grooming the nurses and telling them that, hey, if you support us, we'll give you a place to live. No, you won't. You won't be able to afford it. Who are you kidding? And that's offensive to me.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
And next, we have Caitlin Suter and Bob Sager. I have a gentleman named Ken, but I don't have the last name. So please come ahead, Caitlin.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Caitlin Suter. Since I have been here tonight, I have been told that I should go find somewhere else to live, that I'm stupid, that if I would ever think that I could even afford to live there. I am currently a nurse with MGA Healthcare, and I work with a lot of patients in that area. I've recently applied for several contract jobs and been tracking jobs at Honor Health as they open. This would be a perfect location for me and my coworkers to live. As a nurse, our time is valuable. I often get stuck wasting 30 to 45 minutes or more driving to and from work. A location like this would give me and my colleagues the opportunity to live closer to our clientele and simplify our lifestyles. It's also so nice to see a community that supports frontline workers by offering various generous discounts and programs for nurses. Currently, I don't receive any kind of benefits for where I'm living, and this would be an amazing opportunity to have a place to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Bob Sager. Then gentleman named Ken, do we have more information on that one? Okay, well, we'll hear from, go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Bob Sager, Scottsdale, address of record, I'm in a gated community. I've moved to Scottsdale in 1974, 48 years now this month, and I'm well-aware of all the changes going on. I represent a lot of people. I get around a lot. And the bottom line here, people don't want apartments anymore. We're sick and tired of the apartments. Enough's enough! When you going to wake up? I mean, a lot of this is from the previous administration up here, Mayor Lame and Cordy and Clapp and Millhaven, always voting, anything comes by their way, whether or not it's a Soviet structure, whatever, it's a yes. You know, I was up here on November 21st speaking, and I'm very disappointed that both those projects got passed, especially that despicable optima. And, you know, they were venting about, oh, it's going to save water. No, they got Olympic-sized pools on top of all the buildings. They're not, it's just a joke. If you people think that you're going to suck in to all these gimmicks, get, get a life, because that's what they are. They're, they're claiming that, oh, these nurses, these poor nurses, I got nurses in my family, I got medical people in my family, all over the country, and they commute long distance all the time, and they don't complain about it to me. And I, it's just a gimmick. How many nurses are going to be in this, this unit that's proposed here? It's discrimination. Any, any other person, some construction workers got as much right of moving in there as, as any nurse or other service person. So I say I strongly oppose this project. I want to stop the apartments. You're ruining, this council in the past has been ruining Scottsdale. Let the apartments that are in the pipeline build. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Ken. Please state your full name and place of residence. Then we have Michael Morton and Rick Gaston.
Sorry, when I checked in, they said first name.
Okay, continue.
Ken Kohler. I live on 71st and Greenway in Scottsdale. I support this project. My wife and I actually sent support letters to you folks weeks ago after we attended an open house. Just need to let you know that I was deeply offended this morning and, and felt almost threatened because my wife received an email from Susan Wood. If you don't see it, I have copies here. It just didn't seem appropriate. I don't know if this letter was sent to other people, anybody else received it, but it just didn't seem right. So, I tend to report to the police tomorrow, and I urge you not to support this lady's agenda as you will only empower her to further threaten and bully us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Morton and Rick Gaston, then Lisa Marie Crawford. So Michael Morton, Michael Morton going once. We'll proceed with Rick Gaston and then Lisa Marie Crawford. So last call for Rick Gaston. We have standby boarding. Oh, wait, there he is.
I had yielded my time to Bob Persham, but as long as I'm here, I will just state my opposition to these projects here. We have enough mid-rise, high-density stuff in Scottsdale already. Kirland area, Scottsdale corridor, Sky Song, the entertainment district, South Scottsdale Road, North Scottsdale Road, the McDowell Corridor. Where does it end? It's not just this one project. If they get this, maybe they'll take out the shopping center at 90th Street and Via Linda, where the fries is, my local grocery store. I can walk there. They would make a lot more money if they could put in high-density, mid-rise projects. None of those mid-rise projects are attractive. I hate to break the news to you, but those four or five-story, they're big boxes. Whatever happened to the, to the garden apartments that Mark Taylor built? Those were nice. They were two-story, four to eight units per building. They were situated around green areas and pools. Those fit in. This other stuff does not fit in. Keep it at two stories.
Thank you.
Nothing more than two stories.
Thank you. Next, Lisa Marie Crawford and Nicholas DeGries. We see Lisa Marie. Nick DeGries. William Stevens. State your name and place of residence. Thank you.
How are you guys? My name is Nicholas DeRegis. My state of residence, 4829 North 74th Street. This is the second time I spoke up here, which a little bit different than the time before. So I'm just going to pull up some of the, some of the things that kind of touch close to my heart. So first of all, this fires me up that there's this many people here. I mean, I grew up in Scottsdale, 10993 North 122nd Street, Mountainside, Anasazi, SRP, Choya Park, that's my home. This is, you know, to see this many people come and support, I mean, this, this, this really like. This is, you know, to see this many people come and support, I mean, this, this really like gets me pretty excited. And it's actually ironic, growing up, I used to be called the mayor, so it's funny that I'm actually speaking to the mayor now. And some people in this room can attest to that. It's funny. So I see familiar faces. I walked in and saw one of the commissioners, the guy I've seen at the gym for the last eight years, standing up there. So I just, this, this gets me excited, which is, is, you know, unfortunate to see. I didn't know of the hostile environments that gone down before this. Kind of hurts my heart, obviously. It's very hostile in here. I speak, I give back in this community. I'm a part of three nonprofits that give back towards students and athletes. And I have my own ventures as well on that. So I love this community. Like I said, it fires me up and what doesn't fire me up is, you know, the down, the down, thumbs down and things like that. That's just, it's crazy and I don't know what's happened or transpired. So it's kind of like I'm, I'm kind of ignorant here, but it's pretty insane to see this. So to get to some of my points, I love this community. You know, I, I like to think back to, you know, when we were growing up, a lot of the points I've heard are traffic, things like that. We used to enjoy the traffic. I mean, SRP used to have traffic all the time. There's Goldies, all these different things. And people are laughing. I hear that. I understand that. But we are grateful and we should be blessed that we live in Scottsdale, Arizona. From this room right now, that's not what I sense. Let's think back to early 2000s. Let's think back to before the crash, when there was a lot of people here and that was the greatest time to live here. What happened? All of our friends and family somewhat disappeared. So, you know, I would like it to get back there. That's essentially why I'm up here. I would love to live back towards this direction, Desert Mountain. I speak to the football team this year, basketball team last year. It's my home. And I know I'm running out of time here, so let me just wrap this up because I could be up here all day.
No, it's, it's time, Bill. You got, sorry. Yes, okay, we'll give you, we'll give you, just to give you a chance, we don't have 30 seconds and.
No worries. So I just say, you know, I can, I can go back and forth on a lot of this stuff, but.
You're good.
At the end of the day.
Continue.
Look, at the end of the day, I think about our neighbors. I was talking to people outside and they said, it's about the money. I said, no, 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 we're missing it. It's about the community. And that's the perspective shift that I don't see here is it is about the community. And unfortunately, we missed that. When we say our neighbors, what do we talk about our neighbors? When we invite people into the community, do we bring them anything? Where'd that go? That's how I grew up in this town.
Thank you, sir.
It's a lot of hate. So I would just challenge us.
Thank you, sir.
Team to.
I, I got, we get your point. Thank you so much.
Community. Thank you guys very much.
Next, we'll go with Dana Brightbach and Stephen Murkowitz.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, City Council, thank you for listening to everyone and to me tonight. I don't really have anything written down. I'm here to support my neighbors. I do oppose this, this rezoning, basically is what I, what I oppose. One of the things that I noticed while I was standing here is the really beautiful picture that you guys have up here representing the city of Scottsdale. That's disappearing. And I think a lot of us are concerned about that. One, briefly, I would like to speak to something that I was not expecting to speak to. And that is the contentious discussions that occur on Nextdoor. I've heard that some of our neighbors are rude. I've heard some of them be rude. But I've also heard and read a lot of attacks on the residents of Scottsdale, the people who live here, the people that are directly impacted by this project. And it becomes more contentious because of that. Additionally, it gives you guys a black eye because every time one of these representatives of pro-growth or pro-development defend you guys, it makes you look like that you're in alignment with them. So I just want to say that because it's eroding the trust in the city council. And that's basically really all I have to say. I love this city. I've lived here since 1978. My husband has grown up here. I live in Scottsdale, but I have always worked outside of Scottsdale. My husband's a painter. He works everywhere. It's a nice dream to live and work in the same city. It doesn't always work that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Stephen Murkowitz and Lori Kagiama.
Good evening, Council. I'm here to say a definite no to this and the people that we elected to vote in our behalf. They need to do their job tonight. They'll need to listen to a planning commission that voted three, four to three. They need to go with their own gut feeling on this. And I agree 100% with Dr. Sager that was here earlier. He was a little bit more abrupt, a little bit more, you know, direct with exactly how he called everybody out, like Millhaven, former Cordy, Clapp, the majority that built the, all the apartments down on McDowell. That was Cordy's property, I believe, at one time. Okay, well, whoever's property it was, she used to own car dealerships down there. And now there's apartments as high as you can see. You can't see the mountains anymore. Are we going to do that with North Scottsdale too? We've already done it in a lot of other areas. And now we have a developer coming in here for the second time. He's already been thrown out twice.
Next, we have Lori Kagiama and then Ted Ost. Ted Ost after Lori.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Lori Iketa Kagiama. My family has lived in Arizona over 100 years. So trust me, I have seen a lot of changes. My father and his dad used to take a horse-drawn wagon on a ferry over the Salt River to take produce to market in Phoenix. I have seen a lot of changes. Change is inevitable. This is the fifth-largest city in the United States. They're going to come. Whether apartments are here or not, they're going to come. There's a land that needs to be used. It is within the footprint of the watershed and usability. And not only that, but this developer, I have followed this developer the last five years. I've also followed Lincoln Property and Pollock. I really respect Chris Loughler and Jennifer Schaefer. They're local. They develop from the ground up and they're very conscientious. They're transparent and they work with the council. This project will do wonders. The hospital is there. Traffic is going to come to the hospital people. You're not going to move the hospital. Let's make it advantageous for the workers and the staff and bring diversity that's needed in this footprint. These people will be able to go and work and live in the area and it will, it will revitalize and bring in new vibrancy to this area. It's much needed and I approve this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ted Ost is next.
Hello, Ted Ost, 10223 East Karen Street in Scottsdale Ranch. I've lived in Scottsdale most of my life. My parents still live at the same house at 60th Street and Indian School. I went to OLPH Scottsdale. I used to play football and basketball at the Boys and Girls Club. And I used to go to Scottsdale Firebird games right here. I think this is my first time in this building since second-grade field trip. I also happen to work at Caliber, the developer on this project. I live in the neighborhood and at this point, as you can see, there's just not a lot of people there that are my age. So I think it's time, bring some new housing and open it up to more people.
Thank you. Now, I will mention that that concludes public comment. However, I didn't, please note that several written comments were submitted. They are of record and they're handled through the clerk's office pertaining to this case. So they reference the case number and so forth and the position pro or against the project. At this point, we'll allow the applicant to respond to some of the concerns and, and then any questions from the council ourselves, either to the applicant or staff. Did I miss somebody? What's your name? I don't know. Oh, wait. I don't know that I have your name and I may have missed something. What was your name again, sir? He's here?
He's on the list, Mayor.
Excuse me, Mike, thank you for, for standing up here. Excuse me. We only had 48, so we're doing well.
Well, everybody's been talking. Well, you know, everything's been said so far, but I'm going to say this, that, go back to fundamentals. This city was built on hard-working, law-abiding people who saved and invested and moved here and, like myself and others, and worked all their life to come here. Now, we're going to water down the area with apartment after apartment after apartment. Everybody, this is one of the top places that people want to move to and buy. On my block alone, 69 homes, 12 of them went for sale in the last year, year and a half. And 10 of them didn't stay on the market for more than 14 days. Okay? So if we're going to improve Scottsdale, we want to bring in people from all over that are going to buy and have ownership, okay, in this, in the city. Okay, so they follow rules, laws, and they, they'll earn, and more than that, they'll take care of their area. Okay? The urbanization in all the other major cities right now doesn't work. Can anyone name one where urbanization's really working right now? Okay, all right. Now, in the last two years, we've done this. We've been pushed aside, bullied, taken, censored, and a number of other things that weren't too pleasant. But we've, we've fought the fight and we're going to, and we're going to continue here tonight. And we want to, we want to get listened to. And you people up there, all the council members work for us. Okay? We elected you not for the developers. Tonight, I've heard a lot of people talking about how they are in favor for the development, but none of them really live in the area, in the area, and they all have some kind of interest in, in being there. Okay? We built the apartments downtown. They were for the first responders and the teachers. Then we go to the hospital area, great idea. Oh, they're for the hospital workers. Then we move over to the Goldust program and all of a sudden, it's for the, for the children. Okay? All right, so not, it's unbelievable. But just tonight alone, I looked at the traffic. It was backed up six blocks going down Indian School over to, to the 101. All right? Now, what I want to do is I want to turn right into, into the council here. And Tom Durham, when you were being interviewed, they asked, what was your success to becoming, to becoming elected? And you said, above all, Scottsdale voters should get to determine the future of their city. And I don't think that's been happening. After talking to hundreds of voters, the message I heard was the voters were tired of overdevelopment and developers' failure to pay the additional cost of infrastructure and with their projects. As a result, the council's refusal to listen, citizens led revolts against the Desert Discovery Center and the South Bridge Two program, which showed the council had been completely out of touch. All right?
Thank you, sure. You're, you're right. A little over two minutes.
Right, okay.
Yes, but I appreciate your message and I think.
No, I've gotten someone else's three minutes. And I like to, and I like to finish this if I could.
You were given three minutes.
And she gave me her three minutes.
Yeah.
All right, now, you know, if you don't want me to talk and sense and that's.
Sir, I'm being fair. You were given three minutes. I noticed that you were given three minutes. The timer took care.
She gave me her three minutes too.
No, no, you only get one extra minute for the other person.
All right, well then.
It's useful. That's the way we've been running all night.
Well.
But thank you very much and we got your message. At this point, thank you so much, sir. Next, we will continue. I will close out the, thank you for that catch that I missed you and, and you were given three minutes. Next, we will have the applicant respond to some of the concerns and any questions the, the council may have before we have a motion. Go ahead.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the time. And I think, you know, one thing that I want to say globally is I think our city needed a moment. We're having a moment. So, you know, whether or not it was our intent to provide a moment for the city, hopefully, we're having a moment together here. I took as many notes as I could on everything that was said so that I could hit all the points, but hopefully, if I don't, council can ask the questions that I might have missed. Caliber is not the old owner. We invested in this project initially as an investor about a year, year and a half ago and immediately started on a redevelopment of the project. We acquired the project through three different parcels out of bankruptcy. So we have nothing to do with prior attempts or anything else that was said tonight. And there was a lot of kind of misconception around that, so I just want to make sure that's clear. We took over the development from the prior developer who failed to deliver a project that met the concerns of the council and of the residents that we heard. I heard multiple times the wrong apartment count used. We're using, we have 262 units. I understand the concern about density. Last week, two projects were approved that were twice as dense as ours, roughly, if you combine them. So what we're trying to bring to the table is a new standard of density that's significantly lower than what has been approved in the past and a, and a project that is mostly a three-story project at 36 feet high with only 38 units in our fourth floor that's 48 feet high. So I just want to make sure that's clear. We are acquiring the water necessary for our project. So to the last gentleman's point of bringing the infrastructure to the table, we are acquiring the, the water. We do have the legal right to do so. We have provided that stipulation to the city to ensure that that occurs before a building permit is, is received. In addition to that, we are paying for the signalized light. We're paying for a change in the traffic pattern and we're paying for many different changes that will actually allow a reduction of traffic on Shea Boulevard and hopefully, a change in the way that you access both facilities in the retail centers. The alternative uses are not viable. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been acquiring the project out of bankruptcy. The average nurse in Arizona makes $85,000 a year. Our one- and two-bedroom apartments are priced reasonably, including the discounts and all of those average nurses could afford that price. The height of the project's already been addressed. It was interesting, the, the discussion around apartments causing congestion. People cause congestion. Apartments solve for that because people keep moving here. Also, we, we talked a little bit about making, keeping Scottsdale a tourist destination. Part of the ability for us to continue to be a great tourist destination is that we need to have a place for workers to live, to serve those tourists. Sprouts and Chompies have signed a new 10-year lease. They're not going anywhere and that entire section of the, the development is not included in our application. So the ongoing postings that Sprouts and Chompies are going to get taken out or anything like that is just, is just not factual. Someone said we're using nurses. My wife's a nurse. That's how we got this project, because we were sitting around talking about this problem. And then less than a week later, the prior developer walked in our office asking for money. If I'm using nurses, I'm going to end up divorced. What you don't know about Caliber is we also own 10 hotels. During the pandemic, our hotels were losing money left and right, losing millions. We lost $15 million on those hotels in the last two years to keep them alive and sustain. One of the things we did, it's public record, we offered a thing called Operation Sleep Safe. Operation Sleep Safe came from a Facebook posting that my wife noticed about how people were deathly afraid in March, April, May of 2020 to go home to their families and especially their elderly family members who might be living with them and bring home COVID after they worked on a COVID floor for, for 14 hours on a shift. And what we allowed nurses, doctors, and all kinds of other essential workers to do was to stay at our hotels for free for multiple months while we lost millions of dollars. We are not using nurses. We are trying to provide a real public benefit. The letter from Susan Wood, I didn't bring it up during my presentation, but it was ridiculous. She said, maybe you didn't mean, I know where you live and maybe you didn't mean to support this project. That is completely not in the character of the city and I implore the council to make a statement. I implore you to lead and show us that this type of behavior is not acceptable in our city. I think I'll conclude here because I've got fifteen seconds. We are doing the best we can to fill a need in an empty area that we think is real. I know that there's anger about apartments. I don't disagree with some of the anger. I actually agree with some of the anger. That's why we never invest it. Our project is different. Let's set a new standard. Let's create something that's balanced for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, again, we reserve any questions from council. Councilwoman Janik.
It's not questions, it's comments. Should I wait?
If there's any other question about what's been brought forward at the, earlier this morning, I received a stipulation and regarding water, and it's, it's, it's pretty inadequate, but I can, if you can speak to, I see Supervisor Galvin is here, so I'd like to call you forward for a few questions about water and our concerns. As you know, we are officially entering the Tier Two A on midnight of December thirty-first. How are your considerations of water, and you're related to this case?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Tom Galvin, Partner Rose Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant in that capacity tonight. I think what you have seen tonight from the applicant regarding the water question is an effort in good faith and a novel, creative effort way to address the water situation and concern that people here have in the city of Scottsdale. And the whole reason of that is to underpin and certainly to underline the housing crisis that is here in the city of Scottsdale for healthcare workers who need a place to live. And if there are people here in a hospital who need a nursing, a person who's in the nursing profession, it would be beneficial and behoove the city to have people living directly next door, across the street, in this wonderful new application.
Okay, again, Ms. Galvin, we're in Tier One right now, but we're actually officially in, in Tier Two A and reaching into probably Two B by, by June of this year, when water is scarce upstream, downstream, and water is not a, certainly a serious, it's a serious matter, not a game, and, you know, not a tennis ball. You, were you the party that put together the stipulation that was given to us a few hours ago?
I'm a member of the law firm that is representing the applicant, that is certainly working with them to find a creative solution for the city of Scottsdale. Now, if you're worried about five-hundred-twenty-five acre feet for a house, to address a housing situation in the city of Scottsdale, they're going to have to think about other potential projects that maybe that you might think are worthwhile, that may not be, that meet in that water question. But here, I think this is a situation where the applicant was being proactive, trying to address any concerns for water, trying to be creative, trying to provide an answer for you and the council at the same time to address other situations here at the city, including economic development, transportation, and housing.
Well, again, I'm speaking to, not to Supervisor Galvin, but to Attorney Galvin.
Yep.
You know, we received a development agreement regarding water on November twenty-first. It's not a stipulation, and I, I don't find a, a one-pager adequate in a, in a stipulation form for, for any action. Essentially, the protections of a development agreement on another case was backed up with a performance and other aspects of specific performance in a DA that we don't have tonight.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I want to address the, your concerns about the adequacy of what was given to you today, but I want to ask one of the members of the applicant to, to speak to that specifically.
Mayor and council, Brian Snyder with Caliber. I was the one that worked on putting the water, water agreement together with the GROs program, worked with the city's water resources department to make sure that it was the appropriate structure, and then Rose Law Group worked with city attorney to develop the, the stipulation. And so I don't know if that's answering your question specifically.
Well, it's one thing to see what the additional water demand will be based on the density, but another one to have something in good form where we can act on it as a body. And I don't find that, I, I see some intent, but essentially, tonight, if we grant upzoning, there's no protections for specific performance in a stipulation as, and I, I don't want to get too loose with that because there was a lot of work put into the, this whole subject of, again, water needs and whether or not certain CAP water could be wheeled and other situations. So knowing the, knowing the contribution or whatever is far different than having it formed. I just want to mention that because water was the subject. And I, I have not, we have not accepted a, a, just a one-pager stipulation, nor do I feel we should without, you know, at this late hour. But that's my observation. I can move on to Vice Mayor Durham and Councilwoman Janik. Did you have another insight that-
Yeah, and I think what we're stipulating to is that we are going to provide this, and we can't pull a building permit until we do. So I think there's real teeth in this, you know, stipulation.
Well, that, but the zoning is immediate. So that's where the zoning could be granted, but then it could be contentious as, as far, as far as whether or not there's any teeth on actually pulling a permit in an orderly way. That's why a DA or development agreement is typically, is, is our standard and would be my standard in, in consideration. I see Vice Mayor, thank you very much, sir. Vice Mayor Durham, Councilwoman Janik.
I wanted to call Mr. Loeffler, Loeffler, back up, and then Mr. Barnes for some questions. It's been suggested by one of the witnesses that you let this property deteriorate into its current state. Can, can you explain whether that statement's accurate, and if it's not accurate, can you explain why?
Yeah, thank you. So we acquired the property in its current state, notwithstanding the down tree. Thank you for pointing that out. But we, when we acquired the property in its down state, we had two choices. One was to try to renovate this project and, and fix it, which meant that we had to take a building that we needed, entirely new set of elevators and a bunch of other issues, and try to renovate it and do something that hasn't been able to be done effectively since 2006. So it's been a long time that this building has been, if it had any occupancy, it lost it. It's had a very hard time getting back to occupancy, and it's the reason why the main building in the center, which is kind of the key to the whole piece, was in bankruptcy, and that's why we acquired it out of bankruptcy.
Thank you. That's all my questions for you, but could I ask Mr. Barnes to come up? First, I wanted to ask you, does this rezoning include the Chompies or the Sprouts?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, it does not. The limits only include that first row of buildings, and I've got my slides back up here, so I can probably jump to that.
Is there any possibility that by approving of this tonight, that the applicant would be able to demolish either Sprouts or Chompies?
So the scope of the application tonight is limited to the boundaries of the application shown here. And so any expansion, any request to change the zoning on those portions outside of that would have to come back through this same process to you all, as this case has done.
Thank you. And Mr. Pedgman raised the point that the commercial area there at the north, northwest corner is included in this rezoning? The, the little commercial strip, yes.
That I'm pointing to right here, yes.
Would this rezoning allow the applicant to destroy that part and put up apartments?
So the development plan that is included and stipulated to, with this request, specifies the commercial area remaining. Also, I believe I did hear a comment about adding additional hundred units or something on top of that, but also in our stipulations that we've presented for you is a maximum unit count stipulation that does specify the requested number of units and would not allow for increasing that without coming back to you.
To the council?
Correct.
Not to, not DRB couldn't approve that?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Janik.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want each of you to think about what you have said that causes dissension in our community and in our country. We need to stop it. I have been threatened. I called the police. I've gotten a ton of nasty emails. I don't even look at social media anymore. So I ask all of you, I beg all of you, to think about what your words do. They provoke violence, and we don't need any more of that. That's my first comment. My second comment is, and I had a whole pages of things I could respond to, but it's too late for that. It's all been said. What I will say is, when we move into a neighborhood, we investigate the zoning that surrounds us. And it is a promise to the community to stick with that zoning. And in this instance, I believe we need to stick with that zoning. The other comment I have to make is, these hospitals that are underserved because they can't get the nursing staff, it is time for those hospitals to step up, even though they're not profit. They make a whole lot of profit. When you can bid forty million over beginning options for property, you've got the money to provide housing for your nurses who serve the community, for all the staff that works there, and for the doctors. I don't think it's a responsibility of our community to provide that. And this is a challenge to our hospitals. I think they need to do it. I know many of them can't operate at capacity because they don't have the staff. They have the power and the money to change that. So for me, I will not be supporting this project for those reasons. Thank you.
Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. You know, democracy is a loud, messy, raucous process, but in Scottsdale, it's also core to our value. And the citizens do get it right. You know, there's no such thing when you have two-hundred-and-forty-to-fifty-thousand people of everybody agreeing on anything, but you know when you're darned close, and you know when you got it. So I do want to talk about zoning. Zoning's forever. There's nothing this city council can do to undo zoning that is approved by another city, by another city council. So it is something that we have to take very, very seriously. And I want to say that I have so enjoyed working with Caliber, but the bottom line is, in this case, when you change the zoning, the value of the land is completely different the next day. And the idea of zoning changes, most of you live in a house that some city council at some point changed the zoning. But the point of changing zoning is to make sure that the value that is given to the applicant, to the landowner, to the developer, is returned in value to the community. So I, I strongly believe that we, we're not there yet on this project. We've got to balance community need, our community get with benefit to the applicant. Then I want to talk about community need as well. It's heartbreaking. When I moved here twenty-six years ago, my neighborhood was filled with nurses, teachers, police, doctors. So I get it. There is a community, there has been a community need. There are a lot of reasons. I happen to have been in real estate my whole life, and there are a lot of reasons that we had, had a shortage of housing and continue to struggle with that housing shortage. I'm not going to go into all that. But I can tell you that it's cyclical. Housing markets, housing pricing and availability are cyclical. And I do think we're headed in the right direction. So every year or so, I call a bunch of apartments, and some of the people recognize who I am, I admit, but I, I call and ask about, you know, where are you? What is your occupancy? And I can tell you that just last week, I called on ten, twelve apartment complexes right in the area of this development. And I'm glad to say that, a couple things. Occupancy is down, and I had apartment managers tell me they didn't raise the rent this year. Yay, I don't either, but yay, they didn't raise the rent because they want to make sure that their residents don't move. So we're not, you know, we can't tell people where to live, but I do think we have housing needs. I just am not convinced that it's the housing that we need, the number of apartment, and it's worth it to change the character of this area. There are a lot of firsts with this community, with this proposal, that are good, and there are a lot of firsts that are, that 'll set a precedent that we don't want. So, and the third, the third item I always look for when I decide on a zoning case is resident support. And anybody in the development community can laugh about that, but you know, the bottom line is, every project I've approved has earned, has earned support, has earned support from those immediately in the area. And I would say, we're not there yet on this one. So I just have tremendous respect for this developer, for what he's done during COVID. But, but, but zoning isn't about who you like or who's done good. It's about the zoning. And I'm not going to support this case, but I do appreciate all the people who spoke in favor and in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Okay, I see Councilwoman Littlefield, and if you wish, Littlefield and then Vice Mayor Durham. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a, a couple of questions, and I'm not trying to be rude here. I just really want to know the answers. I read in, on my computer, and it was from Get the Edge, a little news blurb thing.
Sure.
And they said in here that the eligibility requirements for a nurse or a nurse practitioner or someone like that to get an apartment here and to get the, the discount that you're offering. Individuals with a permanent residence within one mile radius of the project, and full or part-time employees of any business located within one mile radius of the project for so long as such individual is employed at such business location or other business located within one mile radius of the project. So for instance, in order for a nurse who works at the Honor Health Hospital, just blocks away from this project, to be eligible for the reduced rent, he or she must already live within one mile of the apartment location. Is that true?
Councilwoman Littlefield, no, ma'am. We, we initially recorded a document where they pulled that information from, and actually, because of their reporting, we said, no, that doesn't read right. So we rerecorded a new document to make sure that it's saying what it is that we're trying to do. And so there's a, a couple of qualifications. One is, anybody who works within a mile, no matter what their profession, can get the discount. Another is, anyone who qualifies as an essential worker, no matter where they live, or no matter where they work, can get the discount. So we can actually house nurses here who work at Scottsdale Osbourne, or who work in other places throughout the entire city. work at Scottsdale Osbourne, or who work in other places throughout the entire city. So, the offer that we're giving to nurses, doctors, firemen, frontline workers, teachers, you know, my daughters hopefully will go to Cochise soon, teachers. Another thing that I think is incredibly important for the city of Scottsdale, that offer is for all of them. And it's not just the discount. It's the opportunity to be first in line to lease, which I think is really important because they can kind of beat the market. And then on top of that, we offer a 10, for 10 years, no rental increases above a 5% annualized increase. So, they're capped at how much the rent could increase on them. Nobody's going to get priced out. Nobody's going to get brought in for a year and then, and then kicked to the curb. So, I don't know if that answers your question fully, but I hope it does.
Okay. Thank you. I also have a bit of a problem that the city owes its employees of not only the city, but who live in the city, that they owe them the ability to be within a mile of their work area. You know, when I was first in work after I graduated from college, I got in the car every day and I drove to work. And I didn't think anything about it. I didn't think that anybody owed me something that I had to be within a mile of where I worked. I drove down Washington Boulevard to downtown Phoenix, and I went to work. I worked, and I got in my car, and I came home again. It never crossed my mind that anybody owed me, you know, anything for that. It was like, that's what you do when you get a job, and you accept the job. When you accept that job, you know where the job is, and you know where you live, and that has to be something that you can do, and that's appropriate and agreeable to you. If it's not, you don't take the job. You find something else. So, I really have a problem with giving that as a reason why we should change the zoning in Scottsdale so somebody doesn't have to drive to work. And I understand it's different today because I'm old, and it was a lot less costly to do that then. But I still have a problem with that concept.
Yes, ma'am. Could I address that quickly?
Yes.
So, I started bagging groceries at 11 years old on a military base for tips. So, I get it. I've worked my whole life. I completely agree. In this case, I don't think we're claiming that anyone is owed anything. I think what we're claiming is, we have a vacant site with a bankrupt building that's been there for a very long time, and we tried to figure out what is the best possible use. And then we saw an obvious need for housing. So, I don't think that we're trying to claim that anyone's owed anything. And Mayor, to the extent that the work that we did over the last 24, 48 hours to get the water stipulation done is not sufficient, we understand that. We didn't even know we could buy water and bring it to our project without education. We learned that. And that was a really, I think, innovative way to address the water issues. And I think it should be the standard for all future developments in Scottsdale. So, to a certain degree, we did the best we could in the time that we have. If it's not sufficient for you to feel comfortable that we're still going to provide that water, I would ask that you continue our case so that we can do a development agreement and make sure we lock in that requirement.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Just Littlefield, you have, you have the floor still.
All right. Thank you. You know, I also have a problem. I'm very familiar with this area. I don't live very far from it. And I've lived in Scottsdale most of my life, so I'm pretty familiar with most of Scottsdale. Old, middle, and new, whatever you want to call it. I do believe that this particular shopping center, which is extremely popular with everybody, every time you go into this shopping center, the parking lot is full. I mean, people use this. They shop there. They like it. And I do think, however, that this has been allowed to depreciate, and it hasn't been kept up. There are things that we have all known should have been done a long time ago that have not been done. That bridge across the entrance to the back alley, that should have gone. And things like that, it's not a reason to accept this project. If you're the property owner, you have an obligation to keep the property maintained and usable and in good shape. And that's just what you do with your own property. When you have a house, you do that with your house. When you have a business, you do that with your business building. When you have a property that you rent out to other people, you do it with that, too. So, I have an issue with that. But, you know, regardless of any of this, this is obviously not wanted by the Scottsdale citizens. I think we all heard pretty loud and clear when we read through all of our emails, only some of which showed up here tonight. And by listening to those citizens tonight, they are against this with a pretty large margin. I truly believe that we ourselves as council are the arm of the local government that represents the citizens. There are other parts of government that represent other people, other organizations, but the council is voted on and elected to represent citizens. And I don't think there's much question to be answered about where our citizens stand on this. Anybody who's read our emails for the last couple of days knows exactly where they stand. The congestion, the light, the noise, and especially the traffic, which will be increased when you build apartment complexes, and you don't have anything there now, when you build apartment complexes, you're going to increase traffic. And water usage, which is a huge issue right now for Scottsdale, for all of Arizona, we're going down in, you know, very soon in our water allotment. And anything that we do from this dais to increase water usage has to be considered very carefully. But this is not desired by our citizens, and they are asking us to make that statement loud and clear. I think we've all heard them pretty loud. Increased traffic is already a problem for this particular area. If you're increasing apartment numbers and homes where people live, you're going to increase the traffic in that area because people are going to get in their cars, and they're going to drive places. That's why you have to have garages and parking spaces for their cars, which aren't there now. So, you have to take that into account also. This is one of the busiest areas, intersections in Scottsdale for traffic, for cars. And we're going to put more traffic on it if we do this. So, that's, that's a big concern for all of us, I think, because Shea Boulevard, you can't expand it. You can't widen it. There's no place to widen it unless you want to do two tiers, which is not realistic. So, I think that's an issue that isn't being adequately addressed. And if we do this, and then the next project comes behind you, and then we do that, we're just adding more and more and more to an already bad situation. I really, you know, I really don't see any real compelling reason to say yes on this. We just, when we approve a PUD, and this is just for those of you in the audience, too, when we approve a PUD designation, when we change to that, any part of the land that is in that PUD, it can get additional apartments without a vote of the council because it's already been approved. They're just not a part of the, you know, it's not going to come back to us. So, if we approve this, all of that land that's in this area where the map was, will be approved for apartments. And it has to go through DR. It has to be, the design has to be approved, and it has to be checked on that. But the council will not have another say on it. So, that's something I think that you need to realize. I don't think that this is ready. I don't think it's been approved by our citizens. And I would like to make a motion to deny this application. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We still have an open floor for discussion. I always try to ask council members who have not spoken yet to speak. And I don't see any, well, I know he's spoken already, but I just mentioned that now. So, I do see only Vice Mayor Durham right now. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to respond to a couple of the comments Councilmember Littlefield made. The Scottsdale Edge article was wrong. It did not properly state the provisions. I brought that to the attention of Caliber, and they quickly amended the provisions so to reflect what Mr. Lefler just said. So, it's not true that a nurse needs to live within a mile in order to get in the apartment. That was a misstatement. It wasn't true. You talked about the deterioration of the project. Mr. Lefler explained that that deterioration did not take place under Caliber's ownership. It was deteriorated before 2021, when Caliber bought the property. So, Caliber did not allow the property to deteriorate. They bought it in the condition that it's in today, and they're trying to make the best of it. I don't understand your concern about owing someplace, somebody, a place to live. When you started driving and found to your job, you added to the traffic and the congestion and the pollution that we're all worried about. So, if Caliber is willing to make people a living space across the street from their employment, I think that's an amazing idea. They're not going to be on the street. They're going to be able to shop at Sprouts. They're going to be able to eat at Chompy's, walk across the street to work. That's a fabulous idea to get people out of their cars. And as for adding more apartments, I specifically asked Mr. Barnes whether that was possible. And he told me it is not. No more apartments can be added. And that's our planning staff that's telling that to us. So, we've shut it down. There are no more apartments that are going to be added.
It would be, it would be an amendment.
Excuse me. Do you have a couple more points? Because, and I understand your point of view, and she expressed her point of view, and now, you know, you're adding your view.
Mr. Barnes told us the facts. It's not a point of view. It's the facts.
I understand, sir. And it's still subject to coming back for a site plan change.
As Mr. Barnes said, it would have to come back to the council.
I heard that as well.
Okay.
I'm not differing with you. Was there another point or counterpoint? Because there's a couple others that we'll.
Well, I wanted to, I did want to explain the merits of this. Mr. Haxby put my campaign statement up on the, on the board, and I thought he was going to ask me about it, and I wish he would have. It's a fair question to ask me about that statement. When I was running for the council, this council had regularly approved 15-story buildings. And that was the reason that I decided to run. Councilmember Whitehead has said that we have raised the bar on, on development in Scottsdale. And we have. When I ran for council, we were talking about 15-story buildings. Now, we are talking about three-story buildings, or buildings that present three stories to the street. So, that's what I meant by smart development, is no more 15-story buildings. No one has dared to present any 15-story buildings on this council. So, we have changed the development field on this council. So, as I've said in the past, I always start by thinking about the location. And some of our emails have described this as a beautiful neighborhood. But if anybody's been there, it's anything but. It's empty asphalt with abandoned buildings. Citizens who appeared before the planning commission said that there is crime and vandalism taking place in this area, which is not a surprise. One of our witnesses worried about crime, and it's taking place there right now because it's an empty, abandoned space. There are no houses in this area. I believe there are none within 1,600 feet. And so, there are no views from residences to be blocked. And from 92nd Street, this presents as a two- or three-story building. Now, currently, this area is the definition of a heat island. And we learned that when we held one of our open houses there. It was miserable. And that's because it's empty, black asphalt. Now, so, keeping this property as is is not a very good idea. Now, Commissioner Kaminsky has pointed out that there were previous attempts to redevelop the property, but they didn't go through. It would have been nice if they did, but they didn't. So, we are where we are. And Caliber has stepped in with what I think is a very good proposal. Now, the failure of those prior projects indicates to me that they were not technically or financially feasible. This, we've talked about the zoning and keeping the zoning for the property. So, the zoning for this property is a four-story medical office building. Now, the experts tell us that a four-story medical office building would create substantially more traffic. If you're worried about traffic, anybody's worried about traffic, the alternative here is a four-story building. And one gentleman talked about, let's find an alternative. Well, we already have an alternative. The alternative is baked in. It's a four-story medical office building, which would cause more traffic and more water consumption than an apartment would. And the medical office building would create more height, and more traffic, and more water than the current proposal. So, the Mercado is not an upzoning. It's actually, it will be lower in height than the medical office building, which is the alternative. And the medical office building doesn't need our approval. If Caliber, if this is denied, Caliber can start building that tomorrow. And this property is very valuable. And so, maybe the medical office building won't be built tomorrow, or maybe next year, but it's going to be built. You don't let this piece of property sit empty, and they have the absolute right to fill it with a four-story medical office building. Now, some of our emails have said that medical office buildings would create less traffic on weekends and at night. Well, that's true, but it would create a lot more traffic during the day. And will that medical office building be built? I don't know. I can't predict the future. But the owners will want to make productive use of this property. And Commissioner Kaminsky pointed out that there is a market for medical office buildings. So, on the traffic, I know the traffic's tough around this area. I have driven there many times, and I get it. But from a traffic perspective, our worst-case scenario is a nurse who lives in Gilbert or Chandler and drives to Honor Health every day. You can't get much more of a traffic problem than that. And the best-case scenario for traffic is a nurse who lives across the street. Now, a lot of people have told me, nurses aren't going to want to do that. Nurses aren't going to want to walk across the street. Well, why not? We've heard from many of them today that they would love to do that. And it's, would be a fabulous thing for traffic, for air pollution, and for many other cases. So, and this project would allow for that. And I previously voted against this project because the developers made a lot of promises and didn't back them up in writing. Now, they have. And will these concessions for nurses and essential workers work? I don't know. I can't predict the future. But it seems to me that it's a very valuable exercise to see whether this type of zoning would work in conjunction with a hospital. On the traffic, the experts have proven, in my view, that the medical office building would be substantially worse than the apartments. And the apartments would have a minimal effect on traffic. There would be effect, an effect on traffic, but it would be minimal. And the additional traffic light will help. On the subject of the water, one of the opponents of this project objected to my prior claim that multifamily projects use less water. It's not my opinion. Those are the facts from our water department. Those are the facts from our water department. They have given us on the council facts and figures which prove that multifamily developments use less water. And one final issue which is concerning to me and which Mr. Pejman brought up, the developers of this project are claiming a PUD status, which means they're combining the acreage of the commercial property with the apartment. And before the Planning Commission, Commissioner Kaminsky objected to this treatment, and I have some similar concerns. PUD areas are usually integrated with commercial and other mixed-use areas, and the level of integration with the commercial area here is relatively minimal, but I think there is some. But my biggest concern is that the designation of the PUD allows the unit density to be spread across the commercial area, and I have a problem with that. So, I have tried to compute the density by reference solely by the land occupied by the apartments, and I believe it's under 50, and it's generally consistent with other projects that the council has passed. So, I'm in favor of this project. There is a division in the community. We've received many logical comments on why this would be a good idea for the community in terms of housing for essential workers, in terms of using a dilapidated area, and doing something constructive with this instead of a medical office building. So, I'm strongly in favor of this project. And finally, I think I'd like to say it's outrageous that some people are receiving mail simply for supporting this project. It doesn't help your cause to send nasty emails to people who disagree with you. You know who did it, and I think it's...I frankly think it's outrageous. It's not in keeping with Scottsdale community, and it really ought to stop. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, I have a queue here. I don't see Councilwoman Capooty or Millhaven. Do you have anything to say on this as we're drawing close to a vote? Thank you.
Were you planning to comment?
Excuse me. I'm asking you if you'd like to comment. If you'd like, please...
Certainly.
There's a motion on the floor, and I saw you blink up a couple times, so...
Well, and I was...
Then you turned off, so...
Yeah. Because I was deferring to my colleagues.
This is your wonderful last meeting, and I'm providing you a good courtesy.
I just...
And I saw you blink on and off three times, so I'm trying to be a gentleman.
Just can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think Vice Mayor Durham makes a lot of really, really good points. Let me start with, this is my neighborhood. I mean, I live less than a mile from this location. I shopped there when it was Safeway, and the FedEx store was a Rite Aid, so you have an idea of how long it's been. It's over 30 years. And I turned left onto 92nd Street to get to Mountain View to get back to my house. So, I would welcome the street light, the light. But one of the speakers made a point about, and Vice Mayor Durham made a similar comment about, if not this, then what? And I think that that's a really important question for us to answer. And so, if not this, then I think there's two options. One is, we continue to have a vacant building and a vacant lot. If it's...I know it's...I personally know this has been vacant for a very, very, very long time. When you get a property out of bankruptcy, it...clearly, the person wasn't trying to run down the property to get zoning. Wouldn't you rather have a tenant get rent and keep your building up rather than lose it in bankruptcy court? So, it tells me that the property wasn't practical, wasn't feasible from a market perspective, so it's not likely that today that property is going to be practical or worth investing to make it. So, they're either going to leave the building vacant, or they're going to knock down the building and will have a vacant lot. Or, as Vice Mayor Durham said, we someday, maybe not today, get a four-story office building. So, those are our two choices if we deny this case. And so, sometimes it's the lesser of all evils. Mr. Haxby was right. Anything that happens here is going to create more traffic than a vacant building and a vacant lot, but someday, something's going to happen. And if you're worried about traffic, a residential use, as Vice Mayor said, is the least...it creates the fewest number of car trips of any other use, including the currently allowed office, and if it were retail, it would create even more traffic. I mean, if you just intuitively think about a thousand-square-foot apartment, maybe two people live there, thousand-square-foot medical office is going to have three or four employees and people in and out all day, and a retail location would need a whole lot more customers than that to stay in business in the same square footage. So intuitively, it makes sense. I know that there's a lot of traffic on these roads, but it flows. I very rarely get caught when it goes two ways. But my point is, if you're worried about traffic, this is the best possible use for this property. I've heard people say, too tall, too dense. Okay, it is not...we've heard already, it's not as tall as what is already allowed, so we're not granting any additional height. And then, too dense, it has twice the open space than would be required, so it's not... so it's less dense than what would be allowed. Having said all that, I do hear concerns. The mayor's concerned about...you know, folks have talked about water, and the Vice Mayor was very articulate about the use of water, and I think this is a great...we have a stipulation here that says, prior to the city's issuance of any building permit, they would need to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the Water Resources Department that they've acquired the right to withdraw 525 acre-feet of water. So, they could not build anything until they've demonstrated they have the water. But I hear the mayor's concern that this might not be adequate, so perhaps it needs some additional work. I also heard the mayor's concern that said, if we approve the zoning, it's in place. If his concern is they can't meet the stipulation, which is clearly enforceable, perhaps we could put a trigger on this that says if they don't demonstrate in a certain amount of time that they have adequate water to meet this obligation, then the zoning would revert back to what it is today. I've also heard, and was it Mr. Crocker who spoke? He was one of the last speakers. I spoke to him at the open house. He had concerns over apartments as a result of being a rental unit, and in his opinion, and in the opinion of several other people, they felt that an ownership unit would be preferable to a rental unit. So, I think...and several of the speakers said, we need to continue to work on this. We need to restructure it. We need to go back to the drawing board. So, in the interest of perhaps getting more clarity around the water stipulation, perhaps considering a trigger to revert the zoning if certain conditions aren't met, potentially looking at changing it to an ownership project, not a rental, and to address some of the other concerns of the residents, I'll make a motion to continue this item so that we can continue to...the developer can continue to work on this project to see if we can't address some of these concerns.
I'll second that. Mayor?
There's a motion and a second. Would you like to speak to that? And I just say that this can be voted on, and then we can move to the main motion. So, it's just a possibility of a continuance. Forty-eight people came here tonight to testify, and I think that was a strong message for rather than bringing them back another time, but do you want to speak to your second?
Just really briefly. Agree. Forty-eight people came, and that's really compelling, and we have read so many comments. I know there were people who felt we didn't see the first of the initial pushback, and believe me, we have all read the hundreds of comments from the first project to this project, and we've all watched it get better and better. And I think Vice Mayor Durham very aptly and carefully went through all of the issues. I certainly couldn't have done it any better. I was prepared to sort of take the three issues that were most irritating to people, the traffic, the water, the fact that that might not be the best and most appropriate use for that space, and I wanted to sort of, you know, give the facts and the reasons as have been presented well here tonight, and of course, the argument of if not this, then what. But we do all listen to the residents. We all listen to the residents, and we read the hundreds of emails and the phone calls, good and bad, and so we do have to, I think, take a pause, although it's hard to tell a developer who has worked so long and hard and diligently and spent so much money that he's got to go back and, you know, spend even longer. Again, something we talk about on this council all the time is the need to provide affordable housing in our community. Every time we poll our residents, it's overwhelming that that's what they want, and yet, every time we're up here with a project that checks the boxes and provides affordable housing, and I've said this almost every one of the last few meetings, we come up with all the reasons why we can't possibly do it, and then we just make it even more expensive to provide that affordable housing, which really doesn't make any sense. But we do hear all of the concerns from everyone in our community, and I think that we are almost going to be obligated to try to go back and make sure that people understand what's happening. There's really no point, I think, in jamming something through if there's so much pushback and unhappiness. So, maybe we take a pause, and we see if we can't make the project better and get more approval from the residents.
Thank you. Part of our etiquette is allowing all of us to speak, and then there was a question of bringing a continuance that popped up as well. I can speak to the continuance first, and I can speak to the main motion as well. And I will speak to both. Two to four times a week, I do something. I either cut a ribbon, or I do a groundbreaking. I do three a week, two or three a week. One of them was right behind Aho Al's. One of them was a 102...102-unit apartment complex. It broke ground about, I think, about seven months ago. I was there. It's on my schedule. And in parking there, there was a construction fence on San Victor, and there was another, probably 200 units, that were already built, and they were just taking off the construction fence. So, when I'm going to a project, and I went...came back, and I checked to see if any...if those two projects had a rezoning case, because I had not heard them, and they were not rezoned. They were according to the land use plan of our city, and that probably constituted about 220 units within walking distance of the hospital. I was not...you know, when I go there, I get a shovel and I do my work. So, when I find this case and other cases, I still measure on three basic things. The question of density, the question of mixed use, of course, traffic, and the overriding issue of water. And any one of us who ignores any of those four issues...I'm not talking about council people. I'm saying that all of us heard about those four key issues. So, my personal finding in that area, when I see 102 under construction right now and another probably 200 that were already built and open, and they're two-story, by the way. They're two-story units. They have garages. They're attractive. They have a pool that's not 60 feet in the air on top of a garage. They seem to be right on the ground, and they look like Scottsdale, and they feel like Scottsdale. The concern that I see here is happening over and over again where a distressed property... and by the way, a distressed...a property is more sellable if it's empty, right? If there's still a couple stores in there, and they have leases and so forth. But if it's rundown and actually people are run out of there, then it's more marketable for the property owner. I'm not saying that this is the case. I'm not pointing any fingers, but obviously, had somebody had a 10-year lease remaining, you'd have to buy them out in order to redevelop that property. I cannot support a continuance. I find that the main questions of density...and I did meet with the applicant last week, and then I got one call in the last six months on this case. The same discussion would be based on those same four issues. And I found that what's happening is they're paying...they're looking at commercial property at commercial land prices, and then trying to meet that elevated price of 2X, 3X, 4X density, right? And that somehow gets justified on a paper, and then it comes to us, and we've got to unwind it. Typically, if...I do not see this property as a mixed-use property. It's obviously...and I've encouraged them to put something on 92nd of commercial use. There is a market for good rebuilt medical office. There is. I know that. I've been told that, both here, Osborne and Northward. So, it broke the rules on density in terms of trying to squeak in and adjoining property. I like the traffic light. Any building that gets built there is going to have to be provided with a traffic light, and that can come through DR case, and it will be a safer situation. I think that if a project had true mixed use, it wouldn't have a little token bit of commercial area to it. So, at this point, we...I think we've spoken. I'd like to take a vote on the continuance, and if anyone wants to speak about the continuance, please do. Is that Councilwoman Whitehead?
Yeah. I just want to make a couple comments. You know, what Councilwoman Millhaven suggested is a fundamentally different project. In fact, it has many of the ideas I shared with this development team a year ago. And I also want to talk about the trigger. You know, I love that sound. When I came on board four years ago, I had all kinds of ideas, and all my greatest ideas ran into state statutes. There's laws. Arizona is a very strong private property rights state. That's a good thing, but that means that any decision we make on zoning, we're pretty much stuck with. There is no such thing as automatically reversing zoning. I will say, and I also want to talk about this idea of affordability. What also pleased me when I was calling about the apartments, and we had a study done that confirmed what I found anecdotally, is that every apartment complex except for two said, do you want a one-bedroom? Do you want a two-bedroom? Do you want a three-bedroom? They did have plenty of availability, and many of the units, including some of the two-bedroom units, are under $2,000. So, I...this idea of heaping blame on the city council for some inaffordability is really inappropriate. And I also want to say, we do have 6,000 units in the pipeline. When I came on board four years ago, that's what I kept saying, is why are...why is the city council approving all these entitlements, and the developers just sitting on them and not building? So, what I have done on council is I have included voluntary, of course, so I don't break any laws. I've had developers include performance guarantees, which means they'll get the project built. But even if they don't meet those guidelines, even if they don't meet the performance, they don't meet that three years, they don't meet the five years, that reversal in zoning's not automatic. It would be a difficult process, and it would take a heck of a city council to make it happen. So, there is no guarantees. I also thought that if the developer wanted a continuance as a first, that he has that option without a council vote. Am I correct on that, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Whitehead, our rules were changed recently, the council rules, to require any continuance by right to be received at least two business days before the hearing.
Right.
So, this applicant doesn't have a right to a continuance tonight. The council can certainly vote to provide this applicant with a continuance tonight. And I do just want to clarify that the motion as stated for the continuance staff is interpreting that to be a motion to continue to a date...to a date certain...I'm sorry, to a date to be determined at a future time.
Yes.
So, okay. Thank you. I'm glad to get that clarification.
And thank you. We don't remember everything. But thank you for that clarification. And I think the project that's being proposed by Councilwoman Millhaven is fundamentally different. It doesn't matter if there's continuance or not. Thank you.
Councilwoman Whitehead, could I address one thing for you?
Sure.
You know, and I appreciate that because for a continuance, the applicant is allowed to respond. So I appreciate that. And please do.
Because of the recent rule changes, as you mentioned, we had to make a difficult decision, and with a difficult case, to bring forward the best possible presentation we could bring you tonight, and obviously, risk a denial, or risk an approval, or risk you not approving a continuance for us. Certainly, as it relates to addressing water issues, as it relates to addressing ownership versus rental, very difficult decisions for any, any developer to try to work our way through. But to the point that many of you have made, we've invested $20 million, more or less, into the site. We're, we're going to own it long-term. We are going to build something on the site at some point in time. And if you guys see a path forward, whether it's ownership or some other change that you think we should pursue, then we would love to continue the case. If you don't see a path forward, I understand. We're, like we said in my presentation, we're submitting ourselves to your leadership. But ultimately, there are positives and negatives to both. Ownership apartments, or ownership versus professionally managed apartments, ownership comes potentially with Airbnb, potentially with less professionally management, management, other things like that. So we came to the table with what we thought was best. And Mayor Otega, I totally understand your view. If you look at those, those developments you're talking about, those are 55 and up communities, as I understand it, doesn't serve the need we were trying to serve. So, just in that particular case.
Thank you for standing tall, and now you may take a seat.
Thank you.
Okay, I see council member, again, we're speaking to, voting on the continuance of the case that was presented today.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify with the City Attorney. I know in the past, we have done zoning changes where we said if certain conditions were not met, it would trigger a reversion to the original zoning. Is that no longer a possibility?
Mayor and Councilmember Millhaven, it's correct. We have done conditional zoning or revisionary zoning stipulations. Typically, we see those in development agreements. The difficulty, I think, that Councilwoman Whitehead is referring to is it, it does require another hearing to remove that zoning designation. So how we have done that in the past, I would say, five to 10 years, is, since the Blue Sky case, is to say that the applicant, if that, as we're talking about it tonight, trigger does not occur within the timeframe specified, that the applicant is required under the development agreement to then bring forward a new zoning request for another zoning hearing to revert the zoning back to the prior zoning designation. And we also typically get a power of attorney that if they don't fulfill that obligation, that the city can take on that obligation for them. But it, it does require additional hearings in order to revert that zoning designation. Otherwise, nobody really knows what that zoning designation is once that trigger doesn't occur, and we've already amended the zoning map amendment. It creates a great deal of confusion.
Thank you. So it is possible, there's a process to do that so that we could, if we wanted to. And the other is, you know, I do think that some of these changes, and maybe there's others that need to be made, would be fairly substantial and would substantially change the project, and, but I think might also substantially change people's point of view. So I, I think that we can, you know, I would rather see us continue and see if we can't modify what's there rather than start all over from the beginning, since they have already made so many changes. And so I just hope that the council majority will certainly give them every opportunity to respond to the community's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. I will vote, vote against a continuance. Again, there, in fact, the legal representation is too weak to continue it on too many ifs. So accordingly, please register your vote to deny the, the continuance, or approve the continuance. Okay, the continuance failed. Therefore, we will move to the main motion. And the main motion is to deny the case, which is of record. Is it necessary to read out the particulars to take action on that simple? Thank you.
Mayor, I believe the motion is sufficient.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on the main motion? Okay, seeing none, please record your vote. Deny is a yes, and no is a, not to deny, so deny is a yes. Thank you. The motion passed, and I believe that there is a pathway. I know that there's a pathway. I think when we sat even last week, when I talked about a possibility of a continuance which could have been granted, I, we did discuss that very directly. And I think that there are a multitude of needs that can be fulfilled with a true mixed use, and not just capitulating to one, one use alone. Let's move on to our, thank you very much. As they clear, we'll ask people to please remain quiet, so we will resume the rest of our case. We have a reminder that case number 20 was continued by right by the previous, by the applicant. Next, we'll move on to item number 21. Would you like a five-minute break? Okay, we will take a five-minute break, and we will resume right up at nine o'clock. Thank you.